Yeah.
SFUSD will provide closed captioning and American Sign Language ASL interpreter services throughout today's board meeting. Live transcription can be found here. H T T P S colon forward slash forward slide. W W W dot stream text dot net forward slash player question mark event equal sign dash. Equal sign SFUSD dashboard attendees who wish to provide public comments to the board and would like an ASL interpreter. Can use the Q and A box in the Zoom app to type their name or handle unless the item or items on the agenda they would like to comment on. The attendee will need to have a functioning camera in order to communicate with the interpreter and the board. When it is the attendees opportunity to provide comments, the Zoom hosts will promote the attendee to panelists and enable the attendees video. Translation, go ahead, please.
Thank you. SFUSD is offering interpretation services in Spanish and Cantonese. If you need interpretation, please dial the following phone number. After dialing, please introduce your phone number. This message will be repeated in Spanish and Cantonese. Buenas tardes. El Distrito Escolar Unificado de San Francisco ofrece tapizos de interpretación en el idioma español. Si necesita interpretación por medio de Google Meet, por favor marque el siguiente número telefónico seguido de la clave de acceso. Uno, tres, uno, nueve, tres, ocho, dos, nueve, seis, siete, seis. Por favor, introduce the call. Seis, seis, cinco, nueve, nueve, seis, nueve, siete, seis, seguido de la tecla numeral o tecla gato. Gracias. Cantonese interpreter, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Luis. 多谢你。Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our translation services.
Yeah. Thank you and welcome to members of the public. We'll pick up with item C, open session. The board will now vote on student expulsion matters as part of our report from closed session. Item C one, I move approval of the stipulated expulsion agreement for one middle school student, matter number two zero two four dash two zero two five dash two six. During the enforcement period, the student will attend Civic Center Middle School during the suspended expulsion period. The student will attend a conference of high school from two school options provided by SFUSD. Can I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please, Mr. Steele.
Thank you, President Kim. Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Gupta?
Yes.
Vice President Hewley?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray?
Yes.
Commissioner Wadma Ward?
Yes.
President Kim?
Yes.
Seven eyes, thank you.
Item C two, report from closed session. In two matters of anticipated litigation, the board by a vote of seven eyes gives direction to the general counsel. In the matter of SFUSD, or in the matter of SFU, oh my gosh, excuse me. In the matter of Student F D versus SFUSD, O A H case number two zero two four, one, two, zero, two, five, one. The board by a vote of seven eyes gives the authority of the district to pay up to the stipulated amount. In the matter of SFUSD at all versus AmeriCorndy. California case number three, two, five, dash, C B, dash, zero, two, four, two, five, dash, E M C. The board by a vote of seven eyes gives the authority of the district to pay up to the stipulated amount. Actually, yeah. I don't think that was a settlement per se. Gives direction to the council, apologies. In the matter of O A H case number two, zero, two, five, oh, four, oh, oh, two, three. The board by a vote of seven eyes gives the authority of the district to pay up to the stipulated amount. In the matter of O A H case number two, zero, two, five, oh, four, oh, three. One, three, the board by a vote of seven eyes gives the authority of the district to pay up to the stipulated amount. The SFUSD Board of Education follows a student outcomes focused governance model. Based on community input, the board has adopted our vision, values, goals, and guardrails. In order to increase the portion of board meeting time we spend on student outcomes, every other regular meeting is a monitoring workshop. This model also calls on the board to empower the superintendent to take full ownership of the strategies used to reach these goals within the guardrails set by the board. As we implement this new governance framework, the board will continue to adopt new systems, routines, and policies to improve student outcomes. We encourage the public to follow this work on our website at sfusd.edu/governance as we commit to finding new and improved ways to more meaningfully engage with staff, students, and families. Moving to item D, public comments. To align with our effective governance model, public comment will last for one hour or until eight P M, whichever is earlier. We aim to respect staff, family, and community time by beginning board business no later than eight P M. Our hope is to conduct board business in an efficient, effective, and accessible manner during reasonable hours. For each participant, you may speak up to one minute. Staff will thank the participant at the one minute mark. At one minute and five seconds, I've asked Mr. Steele and Ms. Berias to please turn off the mic and transition to the next speaker. I ask members of the public to please respect that one minute limit so that we can hear from as many speakers as possible. I encourage speakers who are speaking on the same topic to collaborate and combine their comments so that the board can hear all viewpoints during our limited time. Please also note that the board accepts written public comments via email at boardoffice@sfusd.edu. We will first hear from students, then the general public in person on agenda items, followed by students in person on non-agenda items, and then general public in person on non-agenda items. Regardless of whether in-person public comment is complete, we will save fifteen minutes for remote public comment, taking commenters in the same order as in person. If any time remains, we will then return to in-person public comment. As a reminder, board rules and California law do not allow us to respond to comments or attempt to answer questions during public comment time. If appropriate, the superintendent will ask that staff follow up with the speakers. With that, I will turn it over to Mr. Steele to facilitate public comment. Thank you.
Thank you, President Kim. I'm going to call the students first. I have three cards for students. If there are any additional ones, you can line up as well. The first is Amelia Brown. Come to the podium here, please. Jessica Schaefer, and then I think it says Talia. I'm sorry, from T I. Come on up. One minute each. She can use this one. Do you hear?
I hear.
Yeah. Do you hear? You don't need to be too close, but. That's just fine.
He was in the Brown Island, eight years old. I am in Ms. Erin's second grade class at Dr. Charles Drew. Also, I wrote this speech. We gather around here to fight for what is right. We need our parents. We need them for extra help. We also need them to help with the kids. I learned SIPS with the parents. Ms. Shakari taught me how to read and spell. Ms. Angel teaches me and my friends comprehension so we can think better. Mr. Ronnie teaches us premium third grade grammar. Dear Board of Education, we need our parents to help with the kids, help with SIPS, and to keep fighting for us. If we lose them, this will not happen for us anymore. We would be sad and our computer test scores would go low. Stand and applaud if you agree with me. Thank you for standing.
I'm Wesley Seer. I'm nine, I'm nine years old and am a third grader at Star King Elementary School. My mom yesterday told me that next year, when I am in fourth grade, fourth and fifth grade will only have three teachers. I don't think that is okay because when in my class, I have eighteen students and it's already chaotic enough. So when next year I will have thirty-five students in my class, it will be way more chaotic. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Talia Tilly. I'm at Dr. Charles Drew Elementary School. I'm in the fifth grade. I am here today to request our parent educators, Ms. Kelly, Ms. Rodney, Ms. Shakari, Ms. Angel. Ms. Angel makes sure we are safe and helps me with my academics and writing. Ms. Rodney teaches me to have self-respect and integrity. These relationships were built over these past six years and are irreplaceable. They are not just parent educators, they are a family. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's all I have for student cards today. I'll be moving on to agenda items. I'll be calling names. First five people, please stand at the podium. Valerie Kuki, Sarah Newman, Lena Werner, Roberto Guzman, and Marissa Mocano. You have one minute. Go ahead when you're ready.
My name is Valerie Kuki and I have worked as a reading teacher since two thousand seventeen. We have students who can't decode and read. I had a student say to me once, Ms. Kuki, does this say three or there? I became an ARTIF to target instruction for these students. Socio-economically disadvantaged students are the most effective affected. They cannot afford tutors. My understanding is that we still need a multi-tiered system of support. One of the action items is on the agenda is to explain about the dyslexia screener. If we are screening for dyslexia, we still need to support. We should have a multi-tiered system of support. To me, if we get rid of the ARTIFs, the tier-two support, we will have two tiers, tier one and two, tier three. Our most vulnerable students will fall through the cracks. We will only increase our achievement gap. San Francisco Unified's proposed commitment to increase our test scores for English Language Arts from fifty-two percent proficiency to seventy percent proficiency by two thousand twenty-seven will not happen.
Thank you. Oh, you just turned it off.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Newman and I am a kindergarten teacher and parent at George Peabody Elementary. I am very concerned that the district is choosing to not allow ARTIFs at schools at this time. You have received countless emails from upset parents, staff, and teachers. Your very own Jen Steiner said at the board meeting over a month ago how important these positions are. I am here today to speak on your agenda item related to the Language and Literacy M T S S Plan, a plan that calls for ARTIFs. I am asking that you allow grant and P T A funds to pay for permanent district teachers. School sites that fund these positions do not affect the budget. Blocking these funds will do nothing to close the deficit. Experienced ARTIFs are essential to meeting SFUSD's third grade literacy goals. Eliminating ARTIF positions to ensure all classrooms have the teachers they need will not help. Without ARTIFs, how will the district meet the California State Mandate Code S B one, one, four to screen, identify, and address reading difficulties? There is a network of literacy specialists, ARTIFs, that have trained for years. Schools have built systems around their presence. Schools have made strategic decisions to fund these positions because of the critical services that they provide.
I'm a first grade teacher. Sorry. I'm a first grade teacher at George Peabody. I'm here to speak on behalf of our school's ARTIF, a literacy specialist who has made a real difference in the lives of our students. Our ARTIF works with six of my most struggling readers who came into first grade still trying to have sense of letters and sounds. Three of these six are now at grade level and three have made tremendous strides in both skills and competence this year. Without early intervention supports from ARTIFs, these students are the ones that could fall through the cracks, getting referred to special education and costing the district even more. ARTIFs have been funded by P T As or grants, not the general fund. Removing these positions doesn't save the district money. If SFUSD is serious about meeting its third grade reading goals or complying with S B one, one, four, California's new mandate to screen, identify, and intervene for students with reading difficulties, then we need to get trained literacy specialists more than ever. Let students and schools continue to use P T A and grant funds to support, support permanent teaching positions and keep ARTIFs in our schools. Thank you.
My name is Roberto. As we implemented the B O C S policy fifty-one oh one in the TK feeder, I want to address Guadalupe's future. Since two thousand fourteen, when feeder parents shifted to visitation by late middle school, our enrollments has declined by forty students annually. Families face uncertainty with many now assigned to Deadman and others to visitation by late. These three buses have failed to disconnect our communities by transporting students to schools on the website. This has made families fearful and less likely to choose Guadalupe. We are now seeing grow Guadalupe is this in, is this in a community school? And we are rebuilding through culturally responsive practices, strong family partnerships, and focus on bologna and the student success. So we are requesting a Spanish dual language transitional kindergarten and additional general education kinderclass. Currently, such a PK families are not automatically assigned to Guadalupe. Hidden in our PK TK pipeline, these additions will align early programs to multilingual learners.
Thank you.
In case access to local families.
Thank you.
Guadalupe has reduced chronic acceptivity.
Thank you.
Do I? Okay. Good evening, I'm Marissa. Let me tell you about Jasmina, a senior at O'Connell who will be the first in her family to graduate from high school and to attend college next semester. She credits C C R with providing opportunities to turn her life around. When she received a presentation from her C C R site coordinator in her sophomore year, she was failing classes and in unhealthy relationships. After being accepted into an internship at the VA Hospital, things began to turn around for her. She realized she wanted to work in the health industry. She became more focused in school and life. Now she is a student leader in the health pathway and on the honor roll. Through C C R, Jasmina has interned at the VA Hospital, Boys and Girls Clubs, Giants, Giants Community Fund, UCSF, and is in a C N A training program. With the reduction of the entirely grant-funded positions in C C R, Jasmina is likely one of the last students to have access to these opportunities. Please consider how absurd it is that goal three of SFUSD's goals and guardrails is to increase college and career readiness, while we are simultaneously dismantling the grant-funded infrastructure that makes that goal possible. Eliminating these roles forces C C R to return millions of dollars in secured grant funding. C C R site coordinators are not central office roles. They are educators embedded in the school community. Thank you.
Thank you. I will call the next group. Please come to the podium. It says Amy from O'Connell, Juan Cornejo, I believe, Marilyn Hernandez, Vanessa Moreno, and Renee Gomez.
Hi, everyone. My name is Amy Abaro, principal at John O'Connell High School. Had something prepared, but I'm going to actually speak from my heart to build on what Marissa said. John O'Connell High School is a wall-to-wall career technical education readiness school. We have, all of our students are on wall-to-wall pathways between the cuts to college and career readiness. Next year, our support from Marissa gaining our students in internships, work-based learning, et cetera. We've also experienced a ninety percent cut in equity funding since the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, which makes it increasingly difficult to support our students with our college and career readiness goals. In regards to goal three, interim goal three point three progress monitoring, our students have the highest percentage across SFUSD high schools with eighty percent of our eleventh and twelfth grade African-American Atlantics and Pacifican Islander eleven students completing at least one semester-long C T E course with a letter grade of C or higher. That's something we're really proud of and something we hope that doesn't stall over the next few years. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Juan Cornejo and I vengo representacion de Guadalupe Elementary School de San Francisco. Por la razón que yo estoy acá es porque están desuniendo la familia. De qué razón? Yo a mi hija de dos años la matriculó para el pre-K en la escuela Guadalupe y por equis razón me la mandaron al waiting list. ¿Cómo es posible? Cuando hay suficiente espacio en la escuela, ¿qué está deteniendo para unir nuestra familia? Tenemos que trabajar en conjunto. Si esto es una familia, aquí no se trata del nombre. Si le cambiamos el nombre a la escuela Guadalupe, ¿crees que hay diferencia? Si le ponemos salsa, ¿puede ser que tenemos, podemos obtener un beneficio? Aquí se trata de igualdad. Aquí se trata el futuro de cada uno de nuestros hijos. Esta es la razón que yo por eso estoy aquí, para pelear por cada uno de ellos especialmente, no son hijos, sino por los niños de Estados Unidos. Porque esa es la única razón que yo puedo pelear acá.
Hi, my name is Juan Cornejo and I'm here representing Guadalupe Elementary School. And I, what is going on here? Why are you breaking our families apart? As you know, my daughter was selected to be in pre-K, but now she's in the waiting list. So what is happening? Why are you breaking, were you breaking apart our families? I want to know what you're going to be, what all the changes that you're going to make for our school, even if you change the name, haunted or whatever other name. We're here to unify. And if we don't do this unification, what is going to be the future, not only for my child, but all the children in the United States?
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I am here on behalf of Guadalupe Elementary, and let me tell you, your system is ridiculous. How are you spending six million on a school bus that takes our neighborhood kids to another school when they can perfectly attend Guadalupe? Oh, but they do come after school and use our after-school program. That six million that can be used for our programs on our kids, all all of, in all of our programs, all of the decisions that you are making are affecting our kids drastically. Ever since you decided to have a middle school feeder school and making visitation middle school, um, I'm sorry, feeder school making, uh, our enrollment has declined, has been at least forty students each year. Even though not all of our students get sent to Vis Valley Middle School, but parents don't want to deal with the headache in due time. That is why some parents manage, manage the system.
That's your time, thank you.
Our school is big enough to have another kindergarten and TK class. Let's make our school great, but in where everybody can thrive.
Okay, good evening. My name is Renee Gamas and I'm a parent. My daughter goes to Guadalupe Elementary and she started from pre-K, which is a it's a great, I believe it's a great help for kids, especially those who don't who their first language is, is not English. And, um, also, um, I, it's, there are like about nine classrooms available and we got a great stuff over there at Guadalupe. All we are asking is help because it takes a community to raise a child.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Dr. Vanessa Maravero. I'm the executive director of Parents of Public Schools of San Francisco. And I was a community school coordinator, associate worker at some of the schools that are mentioned here. I wanted to first ask a question about impact assessments. Have you done any internal impact assessments? You can use any logic theory, you can use any continuous improvement sciences, what's the trickle-down effect to the consolidations that you are opposing? I sent, I think, one of the board members some questions to help, and I'd like for you to consider evaluating. Actually, how are these cuts going to be affecting the very people that just came up? The other is I looked over the central office plan, noticing that curriculum instruction has eight point two million dollars in reductions. The Department for Technical Technology has four point zero and Student Family Services has four point six.
Time, thank you.
So in other words, we are reducing where we are saying that we have goals
Thank you.
for this district. Thank you.
We'll be moving on to non-agenda items now. Call the first five, Cassandra Curio, Frank Lara, Jessica Arroyo, Rebecca Hensler, and Maria Angie Moreno. Please come to the podium. One minute each.
Good evening, Commissioners. Cassandra Curio, President of U E S F. The issue of our vacancies for next year is an unresolved and very urgent crisis. Not only do we have layoffs that need to be rescinded for our parent educators in positions that are instructional aid, family counseling, and a fifteen, I'm sorry, family relations, community relations specialists, but also fifteen security guards. All of these positions, as we've heard students say, are necessary. In addition to what we've projected to be on our data, over five hundred possible vacancies for next year. They currently exist right now. If nothing else changed, we have two hundred and eighty of our members right now teaching in schools. They're on temporary contracts to be called back. And so this Doge-like behavior that Mr. Elliot Duchon is currently holding hostage of us making sure we can employ and fully staff our classrooms so that every student has a teacher at the beginning of the school year. It is imperative that you take every measure to advocate to fill those with the people who know want to work in San Francisco.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Maria Moreno, but everybody calls me Angie. I am the Wellness Health Education and Youth Leadership Coordinator and one of the many R thirty-fives that received a pink slip a few months ago. My work is to support, facilitate, and help lead youth internships like YAO and SHAB. YAO groups are facilitated in our high schools throughout, out of our wellness centers, and they focus on educating their peers on health issues that directly impact them. SHAB is our central youth group that is in charge of leading and organizing our anti-vaping, anti-tobacco PSA contest that has been happening for the district for many years. They also organize conferences and workshops. I'm also the child mentor, which is a role that traditionally did not exist, and we have advocated for many years, even when I was a child. This role is very crucial to support child's develop their skills as professionals and to develop their tier-one interventions and wellness centers.
Thank you.
I ask you to just please reconsider the pink slips for all R thirty-fives, and I have letters of support here.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Jessica Arroyo and I'm a first-year bilingual teacher at Sanchez Elementary. At Sanchez, we serve a deeply high-needs student population with many students experiencing serious issues, including housing insecurity, food shortages, and immigration challenges. I'm here tonight to urge you to consider, reconsider the proposed cuts to two critical positions at our school, our attendance liaison and our reading interventionist. Our attendance liaison Sandra is bilingual, deeply trusted, and goes far beyond her role. She's a pillar that holds our community together. Equally vital is our reading interventionist Marcel. With twenty-two students in my class, with several not yet reading at grade level, I'm already stretched very thin. Marcel provides expert targeted instruction that has helped my students go from struggling readers to competent and joyful ones. These positions are not extras, they are essential. Protect the positions that help our children not just survive, but thrive. These positions are not extras, they are essential. Protect the positions that help our children not just survive, but thrive. Thank you.
Right on.
I'm Rebecca Hensler, the LGBTQ Support Liaison at Demmon Middle School for 18 years. When SFUSD founded the LGBTQ Student Support Services Program in 1990, we were the first district in the world to actively support its queer students. In 35 years, the program has literally saved thousands of lives. One supportive adult in LGBTQ youth's life can make that difference. SFUSD's students are 20% less likely to attempt suicide. The person in SFUSD who recruits that, that at least one adult for each school, who trains us, leads us, provides resources is LGBTQ School Climate Coordinator, Kenna Hazelwood. Kenna is essential to our work supporting queer students. And now you are laying Kenna off. How dare you? How dare you balance the budget by abandoning our LGBTQ youth? Our queer youth is disposable to you, as we are to the Trump administration.
Thank you.
Shoulders, evenings, superdose too. One thing I want to echo with the concerns, the growing concerns that we're seeing an elected, whose first assignment is to SFUSD and now we're seeing even as the district is showing growth, they're showing changes, we still have this unelected individual, as our president was saying, doging the district. We can't just assume this is happening nationally. Those effects are happening here. The union said in January and we weren't paying attention, so we keep saying, listen to the educators. We told you a thousand positions would be affected, right? We told you that there would be hundreds of oppositions coming. They're happening. Hundreds of positions now. There's only 96 consolidations. So the contradiction that our sites are facing is you're forcing cuts. And while budget-wise you can do that as elected, because you can, like, right? CD is supposed to represent the interest of the local, then force them to actually have this person, it's a singular person. Now letting the president of San Francisco use the budget to use for our students.
Thank you.
I'm calling the next group. Please forgive me if I mispronounce names. Najwa Ahmed, Kina Hazelwood, Marty Mays, Bruce Mays and Lisa Campbell. Please come to the podium of one minute each.
Good evening. I am so sorry that I'm having to be here for a third time.
Hold on one second. You just had a little bit of work in there. Thank you.
Everybody. My name is Kenna Hazelwood. I am your district coordinator for LGBTQ Student Services. For the third time, I'm here asking for you to put your words into action and make sure we have somebody to support our queer and trans students. I'm talking to families every day who are looking for assurance that their kid will be okay. They don't have to detransition socially in order for them to continue to be safe. It is very real, the fears that people are experiencing and knowing that they have somebody who's gonna still be there that they can talk to, who will make sure that there's a safe person in their schools is essential. This is our pride month. Hi, I've seen so many of you march with us in the parade. It's been wonderful. It is not just about marching, it is about action. It is about making sure that we have the people we need to keep our kids safe. I'm asking that you do what you know you need to do and make sure that all of our students feel safe in our district.
Good evening. My name is Najwa Ahmed and I'm a manager for Wellness and Health Education for the district. I'm also a parent of district students and I'm also an SFUSD grad myself. I am here to advocate for, well, two have spoke, Maria Moreno and Kenna Hazelwood, to keep these R35 positions because they both positions support youth leadership and adults who support the students and such as the community health outreach workers. Our staff who work at sites need the central support for them to increase their capacity to make sure we reach our goals as a district to increase student attendance and the sense of belonging. Also, I'm here to talk about, to advocate for college and career internships. Without these, our students would not get the opportunity to explore different opportunities throughout the city. Please keep the goal of student-centeredness and keep these roles and opportunities for our students in SFUSD.
Hi, good evening. My name is Marty Mays. I'm a Spanish-speaking R40 at Longfellow School, Community Relations Specialist. I'm here to ask that you rescind the preliminary pink slips that you gave us all in March. Most of us are people of color, we're women and we're multilingual staff, we're deeply rooted into these communities. Who is going to help with interpretation, make Wednesday folders in English, Spanish and Chinese, assist parents with Parent View School Cafe, something that's already hard for our 40s in place? Encourage parent engagement through PTA, ELAC, SSCs, fundraise for schools, assist families with TK, Kinder and Middle School applications, do the crucial work the enrollment center needs us to. Who's gonna interpret at parent-teacher conferences? We're the heart of the schools because we care for our students and our families. And we need to help keep our jobs so that we can help these families. Also, we need to save our nurses. We need nurses at school sites, not in cohorts. In an emergency, driving time from a cohort to an office may mean life or death for an innocent student.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Bruce Mays. I'm a parent of former Longfellow students, alumni, and they went there and received a great education and a very great time learning there. My wife just spoke now. She is an amazing woman and a worker at that school. She devotes so much time, wears so many hats and helps to raise money for the school with all the fundraisers. I just don't know who's gonna do that. She's gone through like four or five principals in her career of 12 years there. She holds that office together. You know, she trains these people on all these different roles that they come in not knowing what to do. And her work ethic is unmatched. She is always working at home. She's always there. You know, she doesn't call in sick. You know, she's there and I, and from what I hear is like, that's the, the norm for these paras. You know, these community specialists, these R40s and R35s, you know, I don't know all the titles, but they work hard and they care and they love their job. So please rescind the layoffs.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lisa Campbell. I'm the mother of a ninth grader. I'm here to demand funding for the summer accelerated geometry program. Just yesterday, families were told that 174 students are on the waiting list and there is no funding to open additional sections. This is ridiculous. The whole reason that kids need to take summer geometry is because of the failed SFUSD algebra policy. And now the district can't even provide enough spots for kids to overcome the policy? Summer geometry is essential for kids who want to be competitive for a college admission. Further, there are almost no other in-person options for summer geometry. We know from our superextended COVID closure that online school is not good for kids. Our kids should not have to pay money to take geometry online and sit at home alone all summer. They need the learning, but they also need the socialization. In terms of other summer programs for socialization, never mind the math, deadlines for applying to most other summer internships and activities have already passed. SF Park and Rex programs fill up in March.
Thank you.
I'm gonna call the next group. Please come to the podium. Tiffany Yi, Cara Cooper, Scott Cooper, Josh Davidson and Mabel Jiang. One minute each.
Hi, my name is Tiffany Yi. I am a parent and teacher at Francis Scott Key Elementary School. I am here today to express my concerns regarding the possible elimination of all assistant principals in elementary schools. I am deeply concerned about the safety of our students and how that will impact the well-being of our students and staff without such a crucial position. Although I have known our assistant principal, Karina McGraw, for only nine months, her impact is significant at our FSK community. Ms. McGraw arrives at school before 7:00 AM every day consistently. She is there, ready to take on any questions, troubleshoot any issues and de-escalate any situation she is given. Ms. McGraw finds joyful moments to bring to the staff. She is someone who truly cares about the interests of our staff and students. More importantly, she has an ability to make everyone feel heard. She is a pillar to our school and losing her would be detrimental to our school community. Thank you.
My name is Cara Cooper and I'm a 14-year veteran kindergarten teacher from Francis Scott Key Elementary School. I'm here to express my deep anger, frustration and disappointment regarding the decision to eliminate assistant principals from all SFUSD elementary schools. This decision is not only short-sighted, it is reckless. Removing assistant principals from our school sends a clear message. Leadership, safety and student well-being are no longer a priority. Do you understand what an assistant principal does on a daily basis? They mediate conflicts, support students in crisis, manage discipline with dignity, help teachers with instruction, connect with families, run emergency drills, coordinate support services and fill in wherever they're needed. Because in an elementary school, the unexpected is constant. This decision will increase burnout among staff, decrease safety and stability for students and hurt our most vulnerable learners. It is baffling that a district claiming to champion equity and student-centered learning would dismantle a role that is foundational to both our district's vision and mission. In order for SFUSD to reach its vision through its mission, this decision must be reversed.
Good evening, Board. Dr. Sue?
Hi, my name is Scott and I've been a paraeducator at FSK Elementary for 13 years. This is a call to keep assistant principals at district elementary schools. I'd like to explain why our assistant principal is so vital from my special educator perspective. As quoted from the district's PD series on admin roles with regards to special education, "Most principals don't receive much of any training related to the provision of services for students with disabilities and very few schools have special education supervisors or directors housed within the building." We are fortunate to have a prior SF, sorry, SPED cohort supervisor in our building as our assistant principal. She's also been an RSP and a SOAR teacher. This experience includes curriculum design and implementation, SPED law and compliance, provider oversight and litigation familiarity. Her knowledge is of the utmost importance as very few special educators go into administration. In our case, we have a SPED expert in-house who goes above and beyond daily to support this most vulnerable population numbering over 80 students at our site alone. I implore the Board to please keep elementary assistant principals. Thank you for your time.
My name is Mabel Jiang and I am a paraeducator at Francis Scott Key, which was chosen as a California distinguished school. With 550-plus students, including 80-plus of IEPs and 75 staff, having an assistant principal is critical to maintaining school performance. Our Ms. Karina McGraw, with her extensive experience in special ed, provides the resources to implement and comply with the complexity of IEPs while balancing and meeting the needs of the general ed population. What supports does the Board and Superintendent plan to give to large schools without an assistant principal? How will a principal cover two jobs, like attending 100 IEPs? Without an assistant principal, the district is setting itself up for non-compliant lawsuits. Eliminating assistant principals without understanding the impact shows a lack of insight to the importance of an assistant principal to individual school operations. Thank you.
Hi there. I'm Josh Davidson, chef for SFUSD, chief steward for SEIU 10 to 1 and my kitchen is located on the Macatee campus and I come with good news tonight, so enjoy it for the next 50 seconds. On April 8th, SFUSD for the first time ever served food grown by our students, to our students in a school cafeteria. We harvested 100 pounds of lettuce. We harvested 43 pounds of greens that first week, another 60 pounds of greens the following week. We have another harvest coming in tomorrow. I'm very excited to go to work tomorrow and see what that holds. And it's all because of partnerships across the school. Arts faculty, science faculty at both Academy and at SOTA, a lot of parent involvement, community support from Foodwise, from Urban Sprouts, the help of the Student Nutrition Department, if I do say so myself. All working together to build a real community space on Macatee campus. And in my last couple of seconds, I want to invite you to join us this Saturday or on May 17th for Community Day. Thank you.
Thank you.
You call the next group. Please come to the podium. Jessica Egnos, Jessica Schaefer, Jenny Wan, Violet Tilly and Gabe Shaker, shocked her, I'm sorry, I can't read it. Gabe, if you're here. Go ahead.
Hi, good evening. I'm here to advocate for Star King Elementary, a Mandarin immersion school in Petrow Hill. We are one of the most societomically and ethnically diverse schools in the city and were awarded the Student Success Fund grant to help overcome inequities in our underserved communities. 20% of our students have IEPs and we have a 45% unduplicated population. The budget stabilization plan is undercutting our efforts and enrollment by causing harm and disruption to our students, teachers and programs. SFUSD created a flawed structure of trying to funnel 44 MI students into a classroom of 33 as they move from third to fourth grades with the apparent expectation of combo classes in the upper grades, which is pedagogically, does not work in Mandarin. We've communicated our issues for years, but left to solve them on our own through discretionary site funds. The district is now forbidding this. Our administrator filed for an appeal and had conversations with the multilingual department. Our parents have been advocating and we have no solution coming from SFUSD. We are asking for a meeting with the Commissioners at our school site to help advocate for a solution and help so our learning environment doesn't triage a district-created disaster.
Hi, my name is Jenny Wan. I am coming from Star King here as a parent. I want to stress that Chinese immersion programs, both Mandarin and Cantonese, cannot simply combine fourth and fifth grades the way English or other alphabet-based programs can. Chinese character learning is cumulative and highly structured and merging grades undermines that foundation. For the past nine years, our community has solved this challenge ourselves through discretionary funds. Now, not only is that support being taken away, but the district also is not working with us to find a solution. We're not asking for extra, we're asking to keep what's working. As recipients of the Student Success Fund, DCYF has identified our students as a vulnerable population. Disrupting this program would hurt those that are already benefiting from it and cause real harm. With the district's plans, we will be losing qualified teachers and losing years of experience that we will not likely get back. If we lose them now, we may never rebuild the program. Please reconsider this approach and let us be part of the solution.
Hi, my name is Jessica Schaefer, third Jessica in a row from Star King. So as the other speakers have said, this next year, our school's site budget has resulted in switching from six teachers across fourth and fifth grade to three teachers to handle that entire population. That is across two different programs, a Mandarin immersion, Mandarin immersion program as well as an English program. As they have said, as they have said, you cannot combine fourth and fifth graders in Mandarin because learning characters is a sequential-based process. Additionally, right now, we are able to combine our fourth and fifth grade Mandarin immersion and English learners in for the English learning arts section and that only logistically works if we have sufficient teachers. So if we do not have the restoration of teachers that we need for next year, we'll be unable to continue that community-building process that has been so valuable for our school this year. Finally, it's really difficult to hire credentialed Mandarin teachers in SFUSD. And while next year we would only have three, the year after we would need more. So you'll have to rehire those same teachers. Thank you.
Hi, I'm a teacher at Vis Valley Elementary School, Visitation Valley, and I'm here to talk about our elementary student advisor, Mr. R. Last year, in my first year teaching, I had a newcomer in my class who only spoke Spanish and he had a really, really hard time and Mr. R was the trusting, loving adult on campus who built a relationship, helped him participate in class, helped him make friends and helped me get closer with him too. And there are so many students and so many families at our school who are just like that, who rely on Mr. R to keep them updated, to keep them involved in the school, to help the kids with their work, to help the kids socially, help them get along, helps all of us as teachers too. He translates in the parent-teacher conferences. He comes to help when anyone needs help. He does everything for our school. And if we lost him, the kids would be devastated, the parents would be disconnected. Our school really would not function without him. And so we are here to ask you to rescind all the layoffs for paraeducators and to keep the cuts away from our kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Violet Tilly. I'm a parent to Tilia. She spoke earlier. I was kind of bothered when she came home and told me some, like she was losing out on some of her paraeducators. I live in the neighborhood. My daughter has attended there for five years. I have seen generations of change, but what's happening to our paraeducators, it's the best I've ever seen. These are the people from the community. These are the people from the community, Black, Smoan, whose kids who looked up to them. Like my daughter said, they're not just their teachers or help. They're family. They keep them safe. They take them around the neighborhood where we live. They show them that they are not the neighborhood, that they are them, that they can be someone, to not be a product of where they come from. So I just ask you guys to please, you know, think about this. Our kids are hurting. It's not just everyone else. Thank you.
I'm going to call the next group. Amelia Rivera, Susan Ly, Judy Grossman, Gigi Hasley, and Sarah Terry Fox. I'm sorry, I can't see it. Please come to the podium. One minute each. You can go ahead.
Hello, my name is Amelia Rivera. I am the Community School Coordinator at Vis Valley Elementary and I'm here to advocate for Mr. Rodriguez, our student advisor at Vis Valley Elementary, a Title I's community school in the very southeast corner of San Francisco, where our families and students often speak of feeling like a forgotten part of the city. As educators, we are told to be student-centered, yet these layoffs are anything but that. To lay off our Spanish-speaking student advisor is cutting a lifeline for our students and families. We need Mr. R and we need our students to have every possible resource to thrive. I invite any of you to actually come to our school and shadow Mr. R and you can see how vital and irreplaceable he is to our community, school, and district. You need to do what is right for our kids and rescind these layoffs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Susan Ly. I am a kindergarten teacher at Darker Charles Drew. Over the past three years, our paraeducators have received consistent training from our instructional coaches in SIPs, a research-based phonics program. As a result, 80% of our kindergarten students reached literacy proficiency last year. By the end of February this year, 70% of our kindergarteners are meeting proficiency. We close the gaps for our multilingual learners. These gains are the direct results of the unwavering dedication and expertise of our paraeducators. They are essential to our students' academic success. How will you ensure we maintain and continue to grow this level of achievement if our trained paraeducators are replaced? Laying off four of our paraeducators who are also African-American and Pacific Islander, how do you intend to rebuild the trust of our students who see this as a direct impact on the representation and support they rely on? These are people that are from our community. They understand our students. So please rescind. Please have them come back next year. I really need them. The kids really need them. Our community needs them.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Gigi Hasley and I've been employed with the district for 18 years now, starting off as a security guard, moving to a R-30, which is an activities coordinator, and then moving to, which is a R-11 now. And in these positions, we do do a lot of work to support the kids, mental health, their well-being, and the student engagement between students and teachers. Building that, bridging that gap with them, helping them to understand the students and what they've gone through. Being a product of SFUSD and being just like these students, they need people like them in the schools to help bridge these gaps. Not only do we bridge the communication gap between them, but we also create great ideas to fill the EWI list. And Mission exited 45% of our students out because of the peer-to-peer mentoring program that I worked with Ms. Richel on with Peer Resources to do. And now we've been piling this program for two years and it's working. So please rescind the letters.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Judy Grossman. Nice to see you, Dr. Sue, Mr. Kim. I've been volunteering at Mission High School for 22 years and I've known Gigi since she was a student there. And I followed her progress into a caring, loving adult that makes a difference in students' lives from success to create success for them in the rest of their lives. She mentors them. She works with them. She shows them the right way to do things and how to stay on the straight and narrow. She has changed lives of countless, countless marginalized, underserved children. And I think that her value to Mission High is beyond reproach. She, it makes a significant difference. I've watched her grow as an adult. And please rescind her notice. She is a valuable, valuable resource that can't be replaced. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sarah Moktari Fox and I teach ninth grade at Mission High. And I just want to read a little bit from the SFUSD website for the 2025 vision. "A truly equitable school district. The district's strong commitment to equity and social justice across all of its communities. Every school and every student is a part of a district-wide system of supports designed to ensure that all students and family have the support and resources they need to thrive." That sounds real beautiful, right? Yeah, you've heard all these cuts tonight and you are cutting all R-series resource positions which directly support the vision that you described. And as you just heard, you're cutting a lifeline. Gigi from Mission High. She's been there for 18 years, the same school that she went to. And she builds deep personal connections with students and families over generations, specifically with our historically underserved Black populations, who if we are anti-racist and equitable as we claim to be, we should be giving more to, not less. So please make your actions, match your website, and reinstate Gigi immediately.
Thank you. Kim, we'll call up the final group. Please come line up. Missy Kittle, Maely Velazquez, Mason Waller, Michelle Vidal, Chris Bell Morales, and then Tiana Tilery will be UESF designated this evening.
Good evening. My name is Missy Kittle and I'm an instructional coach at Francis Scott Key Elementary School. You know this Maya Angelou quote, "People will forget what you said. People will forget what you did, but people will never forget how you made them feel." Our students will never forget the feeling of losing a trusted nurse, para, artif, advisor, or teacher. Our families will never forget the frustration with the district unable to adequately staff their child's school. Our tenured teachers will never forget the stress of consolidations, the uncertainty, the unrest this causes to both the teachers forced to leave their beloved schools and to the teachers losing their dear colleagues. Our new teachers will never forget the feeling of disillusionment by a district that canvassed hard to hire them, only to dismiss them 10 months later. You've talked of a necessary pain we must endure to fix this budget. Just so you know, this pain will last. Its impacts will endure and we'll never forget.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Michelle Vidal. I'm an SFUSD parent and I'm the school social worker at Visitation Valley Elementary School. I'm here tonight to ask you to rescind the layoff notice to Mr. Jorge Rodriguez, our elementary school advisor. He's a lifeline to our Spanish-speaking community. I cannot do this work. Our wellness support team cannot do this work without him. On a day-to-day basis, he walks alongside children and families so that they can overcome obstacles and barriers to learning in the southeast sector of San Francisco, like Ms. Rivera mentioned earlier, an often-forgotten part of San Francisco. He is invaluable. We cannot use our site funds, we learned yesterday, to pay for his position next school year. We are asking that we can use our funds to pay for him. We cannot do it without him. We cannot teach children. It requires more than a classroom teacher. This is a new world. It requires more than one teacher in a classroom to educate children. Families need basic needs to thrive.
Thank you.
Clearly, there are a lot of problems that this district has put us in. Transparency or a lack of it is a big one. Not transparency now. It isn't just about information. It's about giving people enough information so they can challenge decisions before they're made. This hasn't happened with you and it hasn't happened with our school administration at Hillcrest. And now we're in a position where decisions are made and we are in communities fighting what everyone is claiming. Done deal. Our hands are tied. That creates big problems. One example, layoffs. So even if we agree with principals about the positions we want to save, because of seniority, we're only saving the positions. Not in way-too-many cases, as we've heard, the person, which is what really, really matters to people. Positions, sure, but those relationships with trusted adults, too often exactly the people kids and families have grown to trust enough to share the information about themselves and their kids and the supports they want and need and that would actually benefit them, gone. And now, the decisions are made by you and our admin. It's a little thing. Not much we can do now. Make the best of it.
My name is Mrs. Morales. I have two girls in Guadalupe and another one is in second grade. I feel that it's very unfair that having my child at school, I have to wait for the answer from the district to know where she's going to be sent. The school originally accounts with a space for over 500 children, but we don't have the help that you guys from the school district could open more classrooms and you could give more educations to more children in our neighborhood, which I think is very unfair because we do have the space and it's a very popular space as well. We should give us more help to give the educations to more children from my neighborhood so we don't have to go and look out for other schools outside our neighborhoods. As parents from the Guadalupe school, we ask for more help from teachers that we can open more schools for Spanish and the TK so that we can have, because we have enough space to do it and we need your help. And we also need bilingual teachers.
Is there a Kim? Do you want to make the announcement about the UESF designation?
Thank you. Yes, UESF has unlimited time to speak on public comment during this time, so please go ahead. Thank you.
Hey, y'all, hey. Good evening, commissioners. Tonight, I come to you with a heavy heart and a pressing question. Who will do the work of the 123 para professionals you're laying off? I know you can't answer me right now, but I really need to ask you very clearly, very directly. Who will do the work if these paraeducators are gone? Who will support the students who feel unseen and unheard? The students who rely on us, trust us, and are guided by us? Who will make sure families who do not speak English still have access to their children's education? Who will help them navigate the system, communicate with teachers, and feel connected to the school community? Who will make sure there is enough coverage on campus to keep our school safe? To de-escalate conflict, respond to emergencies, or just be a steady presence in the hallways? Who will go into our communities, knock on doors, sit down with families whose children are not coming to school regularly, and help them identify the barriers they're facing? Who will do all of this if we're laid off? Let's be real. We already do the work. We do it every single day. Not because we're told to, but because we care. We love our students. We know them by name. We see their potential and we show up for them, day in and day out. And what have we received in return? Threats of layoffs, year after year. Our paraeducators live in constant state of anxiety, never knowing if we have a job come and fall. We try to plan our lives, support our families, pay our rent, while holding our breath until the final decisions are made. And yet, we show up anyway. We work hard. We work past our scheduled hours. We do more than our job descriptions. We pour our hearts, our labor, and yes, even our health into this work. Without pensions, we can't afford to retire. So we work until our bodies give out and even then, we push through. We do it with patience. We do it with dignity. We do it with the belief that one day we'll be made whole. But we haven't been. We've been told to wait, to hold on, to trust that better days are coming. We don't complain. We haven't striked. We waited. We serve. We're loyal, even when the district hasn't been kind to us. Now, for many of us, the day we feared has come. This layoff just isn't a budget decision. It's a betrayal. A breaking of faith with the very workers who have held the district together through crisis after crisis. It's a message that our labor, our humanity, is expendable. And what's even more devastating is the way that it's being handled. We've been forced to make life-altering decisions in incredibly short time spans. Some of us are told by our own administrators that our positions are safe, only to have those reassurances snatched away by a cold, impersonal notice that we must attend layoff hearings in front of a judicial system. How are we supposed to trust our leaders when the communication is so broken, so fragmented, so inhumane? There's no transparency, no honesty, no dignity in the way the process has been unfolding. We're not just positions on a spreadsheet. We're people. We're parents. We're neighbors. We're educators. We're the ones that show up when the system doesn't. We're the ones who see our students when they're overlooked. We're the ones who stay even when we're told there's no future for us. So once again, I ask you, who will do the work when we're gone? Who will be the ones to stand beside our students in crisis? Who will be the ones to listen, to mentor, to show love? Who will stand up for us now? The paraeducators who have stood by the district even when they didn't stand by us. Who among you will be brave enough to advocate for us, not just here, but at the state level, to fight for funding, for job security? And most importantly, who among you will show through action that we are valued, respected, and needed? Because we are. We always have been. But the real question tonight is, will you act like it? Now, I've come to you to speak on behalf of the paraeducators at every meeting since the passing of the Workforce Resolution, sharing comments about the impact of laying off the paraeducators. I don't think I've been clear enough. What I'm asking you, rescind the layoffs for our paraeducators. Thank you.
That concludes in-person public comment. President Kim, can we move on to Zoom comments? Yes.
Yes.
We're now moving on to Zoom public comment. Please raise your hand if you care to share your public comment. Each speaker will have one minute. Can we please have that repeated in Spanish and Chinese?
Buenas tardes. En este momento vamos a tener los comentarios por medio de la plataforma de Zoom. Son comentarios públicos. Por favor, levante su mano si quiere hacer un comentario en este momento. Cada quien va a tener un minuto para poder expresarse. Gracias. Everyone will have a minute to express themselves. Thank you. Cantonese, go ahead.
Thank you. Ms. Marshall?
Thank you so much, young sister. To President Kim, Board Commissioners, Superintendent Sue. On behalf of the N W A C P, we here have heard all the heartfelt comments from the paraprof, from the classified staff, especially the paraprofessional staff. We hear you. We're so sorry this is happening. And we're wondering, in this very rich city, first, thank you for all that you do, working with our students, working alongside of the classroom teacher. And we're wondering, what can be done in this rich city, one of the richest cities in the world, to reach out to all those corporations? Who are who earn billions of dollars and many tax-free dollars? What, how can, how can the district work with those, those companies to help rescind these layoffs? And we're willing to go with the superintendent and the board commissioners to any meetings to have work with this kind of situation so there would not be any parent layoffs. Thank you.
Thank you. Emily?
Hi, my name's Emily Wang. I'm a parent of a first and third grader at Star King Elementary in Petra Hill, programs in special ed, Mandarin, and general ed. Our school is one of 53 S F U S D community schools. And it's really concerning that S F U S D is preventing these schools and communities from using already-approved grant money and other funds in place for their intended purposes. One would think that during all this turmoil in the country, San Francisco would get it right. San Francisco should support our trained and educated workforce with job security and stability, not cut the educators and supporters arbitrarily like we're seeing around the rest of the country. San Francisco should be the place where we continue to support those most in need. San Francisco should be where we're clearly supporting diversity, equity, and inclusion, like I'm hearing, being lost all around this district. We should continue to also support our students in the way that they need, which is not a one-size-fits-all approach. At Star King, we're set to lose three more teachers next year, on top of the already three we lost last year. And these are people, not numbers. They're credentialed, some with, with language positions that are difficult to replace. And beyond the inhumane way that we're treating these educators and their workplace.
Thank you, Emily. That's your time. Thank you. Caller ending in zero, three, four.
Good evening, Board members and Superintendent Sue. This is John Tris Van, a proud product, product of our public schools. I appreciate your hard work when you have no money. I have a question about where you do have money. On March 29, 2024, the district received 24.65 million in the Jewel settlement, thanks to the work of the city attorney. At that time, the district said it would cover costs of current staff, nurses at each middle school, counselors that help educators at high schools. Eight to 10 million dollars to be spent that year, and then eight to 10 million to spend in future years. That was just 13 months ago. It was supposed to pay for 76 nurses, counselors, and health educators. It's important that you can explain to the public where the money went, if there's still money being spent in next year, to tell us where it was spent. And if it's being spent on something other than nurses and other than health, then maybe the court should know and the public should know. I know you have a lot of hard work, but I think there's money available for the nurses, and I just wanted to bring it to your attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Jamie?
I am shocked and in awe of all of you and your ability to upkeep all the resources required to pretend that you are not closing schools and calling it something else. How dare you fire Kenna? How dare you fire one para? How dare you balance your budget on our kids? You allow us to pay for our staff using our entire P T A budget next year. This means we won't fund one single community event for the whole year. And then what? What after that? By allowing us to use our fundraising money, you are literally taxing all the people in my community. This could all be solved if you took one minute and taxed one single billionaire. I'm asking that you put all these cuts on hold until we can elect our own superintendent, someone who will fight for us, not against us. Sue is illegitimate. She is not for us. To the board, now is your time to act. Fire UC, or fire S F U S D doge. Good night.
Thank you. Alyssa?
Thank you. I want to echo all of the support for our LGBTQ Student Services Coordinator, Kenna Hazelwood. Our trans kids are being targeted by no less than the president. And S F U S D's sole staff member dedicated to our queer kids has gotten a layoff notice. On behalf of my son and his peers, I'm asking you to do what you know is right and rescind Kenna's layoff notice. Secondly, laying off security guards is a backdoor to letting S F P D back into our schools, which the district voted to end in the Black Minds Matter resolution in 2020. And I know none of you were here for that, but it was widely supported by the community. So you should not be doing secret backdoors to policies, especially through layoffs. Please keep our trusted security guards. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, my, my name is Laura Kennedy. I'm a parent at Yegua Elementary and a member of our school site council. This week, Yegua was celebrating autism and neurodiversity, celebrating the diverse spectrum and beauty of human minds, minds of all kinds. Yegua is one of only six elementary schools to support students with autism. In December, I shared with that our K through two special day classroom was without a full-time teacher. Today, with three new commissioners and six weeks left in the school year, these students are still without a full-time teacher in these most formative years. We're not alone. We have 90-plus vacancies in the district. I'm here today to ask Dr. Sue, the board, S F U S D leaders at all levels, and anyone listening to come together to fill these vacancies. Please provide us with the data on these vacancies so we could recruit as a collective. For anyone who came here with a request to maintain R T Fs or reduce class sizes, filling these vacancies is the path to getting what you seek. So please let us come together and step up with the urgency this moment calls for to fill the classroom vacancies. Thank you.
Thank you. Erin?
Yes, thank you. I'm with Parents for Public Schools of San Francisco as a board member, and I would like to speak to the short-term evaluation for the Board of Education members' matrix that was shared. I'm concerned, I want to know how the Board of Education Commissioners will be evaluated. It is crucial that it not just be a self-evaluation during this period, but include the community who elects these Board of Education Commissioners. Will there be a town hall where community members can actually share their thoughts? Would it be a survey or focus groups? Or many other ways that the community and residents who typically elect these Board of Education Commissioners may have some input in their evaluation and not just have it be a self-evaluation where they can just rate themselves as doing perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Noah?
Hi, my name is Noah Sloss, S F U S D parent and board member at Parents for Public Schools. Tonight, there'll be a presentation about the new payroll and ERP system that has a $16 million price tag just for this fiscal year. S F U S D spent at least $30 million on Empower, which will now be scrapped. So it's a total waste. Parents did not do this, but they are being told that they can have the teachers and parent educators their need. My question is, will the central office take responsibility for Empower and who will be held accountable? Thank you.
Thank you. Dan?
Hi, I'm Jean Sher, R T F at Yegua. You will not be able to implement the M T S S plan because you are eliminating all R T Fs. We are your intervention staff. Tier three of the plan says R T F or other intervention staff. There is no other intervention staff I know of. Tier two says R T F or classroom teacher. Classroom teachers can do some small group instruction. They do not have the time in the day to do one or two groups of students 30 minutes a day for at least 10 weeks. Without R T Fs, you have no M T S S plan. Many sites have funding, including stable multi-year funding for an R T F, which they're being told they are not allowed to use. Scrap the staffing plan. Waiting until 92% of positions are filled won't work. For one, sites will have budgeted the money elsewhere. Now is when sites are planning their budget. Allow sites to use any available funds for an R T F. Thank you.
Thank you. Hava?
Hello. Hi, my name is Hava Kelly and I'm the C A C Chair. I just want to remind everyone, the purpose of the dyslexia screener law is so we can catch our kids as early as possible to provide them the interventions needed. So as much as I'm concerned about the choice of a mirror, I am equally concerned about the implementation plan thereafter. Especially considering, although we have an M T S S system, by the fall, it is likely we will, we will not have an R T F network. And with that, we will have lost years of training, expertise, institutional knowledge, not to mention, I am uncertain what the plan will be, once a child is screened and identified as needing additional reading interventions. So please, my ask is for you all to transparently share what is the plan? What will the future be for our students who are the most vulnerable in this district? Thank you.
Lisa?
Hello, my name is Lisa Richardson. I am a pair, a family liaison, parent educator at Malcolm X Academy. And I really feel for everyone that is speaking tonight. Thank you, Tiana Tilery, for your words. Because hopefully those people that are sitting behind that desk, this resonates with them. You guys don't understand the trauma, the drama, the anxiety, the grief that you're causing people. You are taking some of the most valuable employees away from these students, but yet San Francisco calls themselves student-centered. I don't see it. It is unfair. It's a disgrace. And I agree with someone, we need to vote on our next superintendent. It's unfair that you come in to this position, hire somebody that you know that's making six times the, the, the price of someone as a parent educator. And are they going to come out and talk to the families? Are they going to knock on the doors?
Thank you, Lisa. That's your time. Thank you. Chris?
I'm Chris Klaus, the sped department head at Washington High School, a school that expects to lose two academic counselors next year. Increasing counseling caseloads by more than 100 students per counselor next year, which will especially harm our students with five oh four plans. I urge S F U S D to also rescind the R T F and parent educator consolidations, which will strip schools of key student and family support positions in special education, family liaison roles, and other critical support roles such as our LGBTQ Student Services Coordinator, Kenna Hazelwood. I am appalled that that last position is on the chopping block, especially given the terrifying, horrible times that we are in. Stripping parent educator and counselor positions from sites and our LGBTQ Student Services Coordinator like this, we force many students into survival mode instead of supporting them so that they can thrive. Find somewhere else to make these budget cuts and find additional funding sources and show that you actually care about our students.
Thank you. Anne?
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, my name is Anna and I'm a teacher at Visitation Valley Elementary School. And as so many public comments have already eloquently stated, please, please rescind the parent educator layoff notices. Our school's elementary advisor, Mr. R, is so crucial to our community. As a teacher, I see every day how Mr. R's hard work leads, really lead to my students' success in school. Literally, he gets them to school. He's done home visits to help address absenteeism at our school and help students come to school. He handles restorative conversations to resolve conflicts so that my students come back to class ready to learn. And my, my students know Mr. R cares about them and they trust him. And we can't just have any, any elementary advisor at our school. It has to be Mr. R because he has formed those relationships. He's irreplaceable. So please rescind the parent educator layoff notices. Thank you.
Thank you. President Kim, that does conclude virtual public comment.
Thank you. I want to just acknowledge and thank members of the public for showing up today to voice your concerns, questions, and pushes. And we've received many emails since our last board meeting and trust they're being read and and we're acknowledging as many as we can. But just want to thank folks, this is a difficult time for our district. We have a lot of challenging decisions to make and and, and people educate our students. And, and all of these will require some thoughtful collaboration and conversation with both the public, the superintendent, and the rest of the board. So thank you for so much for being here and, and voicing your perspectives. I'm going to go ahead and move us on to our next item here. To align with our effective governance practices, the superintendent and her team are tasked with providing a draft of each agenda 12 days in advance. Once that draft agenda is made public on our website, board members have made a commitment to submit clarifying and tactical questions. And staff have made a commitment to respond to those questions in advance of each board meeting. This Q and A doc is linked into each board agenda on board docs, and today it is linked in item J1. We invite the public to review those questions and answers alongside our discussions today. Additionally, to create more focus on more, more space focus on student outcomes, we will be moving most items to our consent calendar and identifying only our highest priority agenda items to discuss. Board members are reminded not to restate questions answered by staff in advance, but instead to bring forward strategic questions that will allow us to better understand our progress towards goals and the underlying strategies that we can be better informed in our decision-making and partner with the superintendent as we hold her accountable. Item E, workshop on student outcomes. Item one, scope and sequence of available measures. I call on the superintendent to call on staff.
Thank you, President Kim. As I shared in March, I, the, our March, our March meeting, that we will start the process to design and craft interim, new interim goals and guardrails that we will share with the board and with the community so that we can move forward in monitoring for that in the new school year. The, to start that process, what we're going to share today is I've invited our research, policy, and accountability team to come and share with you all of the different data metrics, performance measures, and assessment tools that we have at our ready at the, in our data team. And then have that conversation about which ones are meaningful for us, which ones maybe we should just gently retire. And how will we collect this data in order to really move the needle on student outcomes? And more importantly, to help us monitor the work of moving towards student outcomes. So with that, I am going to invite Dr. Ritu Kana, our Head of Research, Planning, and Accountability, as well as her team to share the presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, Board Commissioners, Superintendent, and members of the public. My name is Jess Reyes from Research, Planning, and Assessment, and I'm joined by my colleagues, Ritu Kana and Devin Corrigan. We'll be sharing with you this S F U S D student outcome measures. Next slide, please. S F U S D's scope of measures is based on the 2024-25 student outcome measures, which are situated in four broader domains: attendance, well-being, academics, and high school-specific outcome measures. From these broader measures, we can then specify metrics to better understand how our students are doing. For example, some metrics for attendance may include daily attendance rate or the chronic absenteeism rate, for example. For example, some metrics for attendance may include daily attendance rate or the chronic absenteeism rate, for example. Next slide, please. This slide shows the student outcome measures that are aligned to the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five vision values, goals and guardrails. Along with the specific metric, the frequency and the dates that the data are available. The goal level measures for goal one, two and three are state summative measures which occur annually. The interim goal measures are the benchmark assessments that occur more frequently, which are used to inform instruction. And importantly, serve as the, as the, uh, the measures for progress monitoring. You'll note that the interim guardrails corresponding to guardrail two, which is the whole child, are also student outcome measures. And they are listed here as well. Next slide. So this two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five SFUSD calendar of measures is illustrative and shows many of our student outcome measures. The applicable grade levels, the frequency and the timing that each occurs. There is a hyperlink toward the top of the slide that takes you to a spreadsheet and provides much, much more detailed information. About SFUSD's student outcome measures and the metric scope and sequence, which includes. How each metric is calculated, the source of the data, the corresponding strategy owners, reporting frequency. Hyperlinks and the VVG alignment. And now I'll turn it over to my colleague Devin Corrigan, who will share information about our dashboards.
Thanks, Jess. Evening commissioners, student delegates, members of the public. Thank you for having me and I'm just going to briefly take you through a few of our data dashboards. Which are relatively new offerings to the public and to our school site staff. This first slide is our public data dashboard. This was actually created in response to a board resolution back in the summer of two thousand twenty. As some of you may know, I'm sure you know, you know, well, if you've seen data presentations here before. There are eight categories for race, ethnicity that are commonly reported on. Those are defined by the state and the federal government. On our enrollment form, however, we have twenty categories, twenty-one if you include not specified, which you can also check. So I could tell you more about the resolution and I'm happy to do so, but in a nutshell, what this was designed to do. Was give a lot more data on demand for members of the public, not just enrollment data, which is the snapshot we're looking at now. But across various metrics, which you can see in those tiles on the top, or perhaps you can't see because it's small, but they are there. Sback attendance, suspension data, the survey results for the SEL and Culture Climate Survey. There's, there's a ton of data in there and you're able to interact directly with this dashboard again on demand. It's always there for you to look at by filtering, you're able to interact by filtering and really changing the report. In countless ways, the permutations are, there's thousands and thousands of ways you can look at the groups on these reports. By race, ethnicity and also by, by various other student groups. So really I wanted to make sure that, that we, we showed you a snapshot of this. I encourage you to look through the other views on this dashboard as well. Each of those six tiles on the top would take you to a different view. And as you'll see across all those tiles, the measures are disaggregated in various ways. I also wanted to mention that we update this twice per year. A lot of the measures that are included on this dashboard, there simply isn't data to update all year long. For example, Sback is, is just once a year, but we do update it twice a year. And that's actually something that's defined in the board resolution when that was, that was passed in the summer of two thousand twenty. The link is down there too, if you'd like to click through that or write that down to, to explore more on your own time. Next slide, please. So I've got two more slides left and they're going to show two different dashboards. The thing to know about these two dashboards is that they are for internal use only. So these were designed for site leaders. They're designed for site leaders and they contain personally identifiable student information, which that first dashboard does not. That is public ready. This one is not, you're able to click through on these data visualizations, you're able to click through and actually eventually get down to lists of student names. It's a really powerful tool for site leaders looking to make decisions about what's happening at their school. And we actually update this every six weeks or even more frequently because it has, it has data that is updated more frequently. For example, the STAR district assessment is something that we can update quite frequently and we do. So I just wanted to point out a couple of things by way of giving you a brief tour here. The green boxes at the top, that's where you click through, just as in the previous slide. This will take you to different views, which are associated with different measures or metrics. They are aligned to the VVGs, many of them, and we call that out at the top so you can see where that alignment is. We try to make that as clear as possible. We also disaggregate, that's the orange or yeah, looks sort of yellow. The filters at the top, also similar to the last dashboard view, that really is where the power in these dashboards is. I mentioned that it's on demand, which is another very powerful aspect of these dashboards. But really it's that that filtering is where these reports become so powerful because you're not reaching out to my department to ask for a custom report. You can just make it yourself. And the last thing I wanted to point out, and this is really something we always strive to do with our PA reports, is report trend data. So that blue box down the bottom left is showing data over a period of two years. And in other reports, we show three years or ten years, it depends on the, the context, but we always. Show trend data when we have it and when it's comparable. Next slide, please. This is a different dashboard, it was designed last spring and summer. For the purpose of helping site leaders plan for the upcoming school year. Now, the difference between what you're looking at now and the last one, while they are both internal dashboards. The last one is a progress monitoring dashboard that we update throughout the school year, whereas this one was a one-off. At the end of the school year, we compile all this data, once it's all clean and ready to go at the end of the year. And we put it here, again, this is sort of similar to the static PDF reports we've produced in the past. But far more powerful because of the filters that are here. And I don't want to repeat too much because it shares a lot in common with these other dashboards I've already talked through. But one thing I want to point out here is that on this end of your dashboard, you can actually, you can have the metrics sort of interact with each other. So if you had, if you zoomed in on this, you would see that it has suspension data, has Sback data. And then that filter up the top right on both of these views is allowing you to filter on students who are chronically absent and students who are not chronically absent. So you could see Sback outcomes, suspension outcomes for students that are in one or either of those groups or both of those groups. So again, really powerful to be able to interact with the data on demand using these filters. We put in as many groups as we can, we can fit so much more data in these dashboards than we can in a PDF or in a slide. So again, first one I showed you was for the public, these last two are for internal use and they proved very popular. And I'm looking forward to take any questions about these. We're sort of building out our capacity to put more dashboards in the hands of, of more of our stakeholders. So it's early days yet, but we're looking forward to building it out and taking your questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Commissioners, just given the amount of items we have in our agenda today. And the way I'm going to structure our discussion is to have each commissioner go around and just ask their top question for now. We'll do a similar like word vomiting of our questions, but just one at a time. We'll give staff an opportunity to make sense of that and respond and we'll enter into a conversation. I am going to put a two-minute timer for ourselves and if you hear it go off, just know it's two minutes. And if you have not asked a question by then, I will ask you to ask a question. Just wanted to front load expectations here. Okay, do we have someone who wants to kick us off with questions?
Before we start, can I just, sorry, but does, what's our, what's our goal here in this? I'm not totally clear on what the, what our board goal.
Oh, sorry, thank you.
That's okay, I just want to.
Yeah, I actually wrote this and I never actually mentioned it. So the focus, to be clear, is on these measures, not on progress monitoring. We have a separate conversation we'll have as part of our conver, ongoing conversations around how to progress monitor. In part with our board metrics today, but also just ongoing through our ad hoc potentially. The focus today is just on making sense of the measures that we have in front of us to better understand the data that the district uses and that's available to the public. This is not an action item, so there's no motion to make or, or action to give. It's more of an opportunity for both the public to witness and the board to understand what the data is that we have as a district. And we can ask questions around that. But again, focused on the measures themselves, not around the progress monitoring of that. What's that? Yeah, go for it.
Thank you. Is there, my, just too close? Everybody's mic up? Okay. Thank you all so much and wow, this is a lot of numbers and a lot of data and a lot of sheets and clicks and things. Which is not necessarily in my expertise, but I appreciate it. And I know that we need this information in order to inform sort of our next steps in what we're doing. So my question is about, I guess it's slide five, the, the, the public dashboard with the summative student data. And there's the, the squares on the top, starts off with enrollment, race and ethnicity attendance. Let's see which one I'm, so Michael, I, I guess if, if we're, if the question is about the data. And that's the, the data and, and. The measures, we know that. Race and ethnicity. Relates to suspensions. We know that attendance relates to, often maps on to Sback scores if you're not there to take the test. Or you've missed parts of certain days of school or a certain number of schools it impacts. So I'm wondering, how are, how are you all going to be sort of, I guess. Integrating the data so that we can see all of the trends? Because I think it's really important that we have this, but obviously they're not, they, they don't operate in silos or so interconnected. So does, do the, do these dashboards allow you to say, okay, we're going to look at how attendance. Maybe relates to suspensions and Sback numbers? Is that something that these dashboards allow the public to see?
Great, so thank you so much for this. It's a really nice visualization. I really appreciate the inventory and the. And, and this is clearly a, a reference document that I'd love to just continually go back to, just to understand. The cadence of when things come out and so forth. So I really appreciate that. My one question, right, and I've, I have a lot of individual comments that I'd love to, you know, perhaps take offline. I think the, the one question that I have right now is. You know. I always seek to democratize data and provide as much transparency as possible. I think that's especially critical at this point, at this juncture with SFUSD. Is there a way to down, for folks to be able to download the data? So that users can analyze it as they see fit, be it educators, be it parents, community members. In a way, creating a peer-to-peer ability to see what the amazing folks of San Francisco can come up with if they have access to this data or database.
I want to echo everyone's appreciation for these dashboards. Cannot wait to geek out on them. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. I know this has been a long time in the coming and this has been multiple iterations, so thank you very much. I, my question is about slide. I don't know what number it is. Slide three, measures aligned to the twenty-four, twenty-five VVGs. So my question is more specific and this is a question I've asked over multiple years and multiple administrations and multiple boards. Do we have the right metrics in place when it comes to reading proficiency? I've always questioned the efficacy of using our standardized tests. And I appreciate Dr. Kana's willingness to always be a thought partner in this area. I'll give a very specific anecdote in this area. There's an elementary school and especially looking at one point one, where we're talking about our each and every student, where we put some extra attention. We had one elementary school where with that fall. Early literacy benchmark, the, the school was super excited to see that eighty percent of their African-American and Pacific Islander students. In that each and every initiative scored in proficient. I mean, it was great. Then, when, when we did our winter assessment, the scores dropped to twenty percent proficiency in the same student groups. Which of course set off alarm bells, so it's great to have the data to go back and figure out and dig into the why. And the why that was found was in that first iteration. The school had given release time to the teachers to oversee the administration of this computerized test. Because they're kindergartners, right? And so the teachers themselves didn't, they didn't administer the test, but they were in there in the background to keep students on, to keep, I'm fin, I'm gonna, there's a point, there's a point. To keep students engaged. But because things had gone so well in that first iteration, they didn't do the same release time and the kids were left on their own for the administration of the test. Even though they had the skill sets, they didn't stay engaged with the test to actually get the same proficiency levels. So to me, the results that we're getting and using to monitor whether or not. They're indicative of whether or not our students can access the tests, not whether or not our students can actually read. And this is one data point, one example, but it really highlights my huge concerns with whether these standardized tests are what we should be using. To measure this hugely important goal.
Is there a question there?
That was, that was a question.
Okay.
It was, are these standardized tests based on this? I, I question whether or not these are the right measures to actually show the brilliant knowledge that our kids are learning in our school.
Thank you. Student delegates, and then we'll come back around.
First of all, that was a really good question. I was going to add on to that, but for now, my main question was, how do you plan on using this data to benefit students? When it comes to providing them with resources they need to catch up, continue persevering and like stay on track for the near future.
I want to echo the appreciation for the amazing work. My question is sort of more on the, the cultivation and how we're like showcasing the data. And it's more of what sort of feedback have you collected from educators, some people that you want to see, especially in the exclusive data set? People that you want to be using this to, to influence their decision-making. What, has there been a concerted effort to like get their feedback to then change some of the things on the site? Because obviously I'm not really the intended audience, but some of the things I'm looking at, I'm like, I'm a little concerned or confused on what's going on. So I want to know if that's sort of been something that you've looked at and asked people for feedback on how you could make it potentially a little bit more streamlined and easier to understand for them.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you so much. You've distinguished here between a public dashboard and a site facing, some site facing dashboards. And what I'd like to ask you is, what do you think is most helpful for the public to know about the public dashboard and accessing it and for the site to know? And who can each of those groups go to if they have a question or need help in figuring out how to use these?
As usual, brilliant work by the research, planning and assessment department. Thank you. My question, I think, is maybe similar to Commissioner, related to Commissioner Fisher's around. You know, this, this is a phenomenal use of the data that we have and it's relatively easy to measure, right? Standardized tests, the reason we use standardized tests is because they're quick, they're easy and they're a great way to measure, to take a rough dipstick of student achievement across large numbers of students. But the, but the smaller group of students you get and the closer you get to the classroom, the less useful they are. Frankly, teachers are using lots of other data on a daily, weekly and monthly basis to assess whether their kids, how their kids are doing. If you ask a kindergarten teacher or a first grade teacher how kids are doing toward that third grade literacy goal, they have assessments they're using. That might be sitting with a kid and reading with them, right? I mean, there's, some are more formal, some are less formal. So I guess my question is sort of, how does this connect to that? And how do we make sure that we don't sort of get distracted by what's easy to measure? And just focus on the stuff we can measure as opposed to the stuff that really matters, right? Or how do we connect those two, let's say, right? Because this is, again, I don't want to diminish the importance of this for looking at trends, but, but it's not the stuff that actually teachers use to adjust their daily practice, right? So.
Thank you so much. I think this is a really important for the board to understand the, the important work that you're doing. Because if we don't understand what the data is and what the data is telling us, we can't actually effectively progress monitor. And if we pick. Data points or measures that aren't really relevant to what's happening on the ground, again, we can't effectively know what our kids are learning and where to. Again, we can't effectively know what our kids are learning and where to put our resources. And so my questions, one is to echo Commissioner Fishers. If we have reason to believe that some of our, especially maybe younger grade reading assessments are actually maybe measuring more students' ability to follow along with the test rather than what they're actually able to read. Then have we considered actually exploring that further and seeing whether we need to get release time for some of the at least, you know, three times a year tests that we're administering to help students with, you know, who might not have developed attention spans or might not be self-directed and interested in computer-based standardized testing at six years old? To help them actually do the test so that we can actually have meaningful information and know, you know, where our kids are learning and where they need help. So we can better target those resources. And then my other question is, well, I have two. One is with the dashboard, and please forgive me if I'm not understanding it, but the grade groups pretty much correspond to what grade level a school is. And it seems very difficult, if not impossible, to me, it seems impossible what's built in on the dashboard to actually break information down by grade level within a school, which then makes it very difficult for school site councils and ELAX that are, you know, making, I'm getting played off, that are making funding direction recommendations to actually know when kids are having issues. And so then when to, where to spend extra funds to intervene. And so I know there's all sorts of privacy considerations around small data sets. But if there's a way that we can actually break down this data by grade level, that would be, I think, really meaningful to actually spend funds on the students where they need to figure out when they need intervention. And relatedly, a lot of our current metrics on interim guardrails address the literacy and other achievement levels of English language learners. But by definition, English language learners are folks who have not reclassified or been reclassified for two years. And so essentially, once folks reclassify, they're removed from that data set. And so we're not actually getting a full picture of how kids who come into the system, learning English are progressing. Instead, we're by definition, looking at the kids who have not made progress. And so I'm wondering if you can give us your thoughts as experts in the data that we collect about what we might better look at to figure out what progress are, especially Spanish speaking, English language learners are and aren't making, because maybe we need to look at how long it takes students to reclassify or what percentage of students are reclassifying over a certain amount of time after coming. Cause if we're just looking at data that's telling us these are newcomers rather than these are kids who are not responding to interventions, like those are two very different things that the same data could be telling us. So your kind of expertise and guidance around those areas would be, would be really helpful.
One question. I'll just say, okay. My question, so I guess kind of carrying on with the similar sentiment of just trying to understand what data we have that shows us the effect of the learning experience in the classroom. To a certain extent, Commissioner Alexander, like just to acknowledge as well, like STAR data kind of starts to get us there for actionable data as close to students as possible. I think the, the question I have is around the difference between the, the, the kind of information we have for our K eight students and the kind of information that we have for high school students. And the closest I think we can get there is, is based on GPA, maybe, or success in college and career readiness courses. But I guess my question is around particularly the metrics related to goal three. What information do we have that tell us the quality of the learning that's happening in the classroom in high school? And, and to me, I'm able to make a little bit clearer, more direct connection between STAR reading and STAR math with instruction and in learning. But just trying to better understand what, what information do we have available at the high school level? And I was at a high school teacher, I was a middle school teacher. So I, this is a, an area of learning for me too, just generally understanding what that would look like and what that would mean. That's it. Thank you. Oh, and I know many people have more questions, but I'll give you some time to just maybe coordinate on where you want to begin. And then we can start our conversation there. I know there are commissioners who have other questions and we will get to them as well.
Thank you for your questions.
Yeah, when you're ready, go for it.
Okay. I'm gonna pick through the notes here for the dashboard related ones. May toss a few to my colleagues to elaborate. But let's see. Okay. Thinking about how numbers interact. The question made me think about a point that I didn't quite make that I think is important. The resolution was passed in 2020, summer of 2020. The public dashboard was designed in response to that resolution shortly thereafter, came out that fall. The other dashboards that I showed you that are internal were designed years later, actually, just this past year. So I think you see a lot more interaction with the data. It sort of reflects the evolution and that we poured our time into exactly that, showing that kind of interaction. So I would say the internal dashboards, again, that means that principals and assistant principals have access and central office leaders, but it's, it's not a very large group. And that's largely because the licenses are very expensive. In those internal dashboards, like you see a lot more of that interaction. And I couldn't agree more that that interaction is important. And that's why, you know, you saw that example where you could click on chronic absenteeism, yes or no, and see how that affects suspension rates, for example. If there are other interactions that you're interested in, we would love the feedback. Our only goal here is that this is useful. It's not just supposed to look pretty. We really want people to find this dashboard useful and, and actually inform their decisions. So I think that also gets to another question, which was about accessing the data, downloading the data, democratizing the data, all things that I agree with as well. I will say for the public dashboard, the way it's set up right now is you can download those images and those slides. We don't have it set up to download, like what you might call like a research file. Like if you can go to, if you go to the CDE, you can find, you know, a table or other data visualizations. But then you could also find usually buried at the bottom, you can download an actual research file. And it's not going to have personally identifiable information. We'll have stripped that of any small groups. So that is something, even though you open it up and it's like, you know, the most data you've ever seen in your life, you're not going to be able to actually identify anybody. So we don't have that posted, but we could create a spreadsheet like that if there was interest. And if there was interest in doing your own data analysis, of course, that's going to be what you need, not, you know, slides or an image that you can download. So you can download some, but not all. Again, I think with every question, there's going to be this distinction between the public dashboard and the internal, you know, dashboards that have, I'll just start saying PII to shorten it, personally identifiable information. There's so much power in those internal ones because they are allowed to download the data. They can, they can zoom in on a group of two, and then they want to know, well, who are those two students? And they can find out even just within the dashboard, they don't have to go to another system. So it is very powerful in that way for the internal use, less so for the public. But one way I think we could scratch that itch is with a public research file, if I'm understanding your question correctly. Okay. Let's see, what else? Feedback. Okay. So there are a couple of questions about feedback. Couple of things. So absolutely, we always put our email address out there and encourage feedback. It goes back to a point I just made. If this isn't really useful for the stakeholders, it's just a waste of time. We really want to hear from people about what metrics they want to see and how they want to see them presented. So we did get feedback, I would say in particular, we got feedback from members of LEED and SFSD to make sure that the data included and the way it was displayed was actually going to be helpful. And Lyx, and you mentioned some things in particular. And the, the question about who would we talk to is, is me. So I'm happy to talk anytime about something that could be more clear, something that isn't there, that maybe could be something that seems superfluous and maybe we should take it out. There's always this balance, I will say. We are, we sort of have this interesting problem of like feeling like we're swimming in data all the time. And also we don't have all the data and all the information we wish we had. And then on these dashboards, of course, you're just seeing a little like a slice of the universe of data we have access to. So we're constantly making decisions about what to put out there and what to leave off. So that it's not just this totally overwhelming experience as you open it up. And that is going to be a push and pull that never goes away. And we would love feedback again on what to put up there, what sort of should rise to the top and be featured on a dashboard? When really there's so much information we, we could put out there. So yeah, I'm the person, please feel free to email me or anyone in my department, they will get you to me. And I'm always happy to talk about this stuff and, and make improvements. We do not consider these to be, you know, relics to be put behind museum glass. They are living and breathing and we want to update them. We want to improve them. So I really do encourage that feedback. Thanks for that question. Let's see, other things, I know, I'm looking at the, did you want to jump in? The ELs, we have, again, I would say part of that answers more detailed information in the internal dashboards. You actually can look at really detailed English learner data, but not on the public dashboard. That's something we could look into expanding what we're always, you know, trying to balance student privacy, student data privacy. But happy to look more at that. And then the last thing, maybe I'll just say quickly is.
That's a good question.
Please.
For internal dashboard availability, is there a way that that can be made accessible to like school site councils within privacy policies? Cause I think that part of the issue may be that school site councils may have folks with expertise who really want to dig into this on a site level basis. But the principals may not fully understand the tool or have the ability to do the data analysis themselves or just the bandwidth to do it themselves. They are obviously very busy.
Yeah, I think that's a great point. And you know, these tableau licenses do cost a lot, but this year we are going to get a grant from Salesforce that would actually pay for all the licenses. And we are trying to even extend it to, you know, more than just the principal. There is a lot of data privacy, so we can give them access, but then not all the way down to the student name. You know, so we'll try to make sure that, you know, if it's a council, then there is a certain amount of for pastor that we other do. That's one. And then in terms of, you know, your, your specific question, I do want to say that the capacity of the data does allow you, if you want to find out, how are my third grade long-term ELs doing? Okay. Let's say you want to compare your Latinos versus your Asian students. So you can do all that within this dashboard. So that capacity does exist. If you would like to see what is the profile of my students that are chronically absent on all metrics versus those that are not chronically absent on all metrics, you have the power to do that. So that's there, but I do want also, you know, ask my high school students. For us, we just mainly look at GPA for high school to see if you're on track, to see if there's course completion and there's grades, but what are the measures that you think we can feature?
Just the, on the note around public, oh. Oh, so sorry. Did not mean to interrupt. I'm pretty young too, but you can go ahead and respond.
I said, we always, you know, look at just grades. When we look, we look at on track and we, it's still grades and we still look at GPA, we look at your AP tests, you know? But primarily it's grades that we look at at the high school level. Are there other indicators that you feel are more important that we should have an account for that are academic?
Personally, I think from a larger like district scale, I think it'd be harder to find anything that's as, you know, like easy to identify as that from a district trend level. And I think Christian Alexander, you were talking about this, like school sites themselves, they will have their own sort of assessments, even the high school level, that same sort of thing to feel like they're on track or not. They have same supports or not, ask someone like a counselor or like someone they go to a lot, right? But that would be harder to, I'd obviously identify from like a larger district perspective. So I think that makes sense if you're, I, I feel like you're thinking. Cause I, at least for me, as like something easy to identify, like large scale, it's probably not.
Okay. Um, I want to like better understand your question so I can answer it to the best of my ability. So with that said, um, when you're talking about like tracking data, what goal are you trying to get out of it?
It's primarily around progress monitoring our goals, you know, which is specifically goal three, which is college and career readiness. And we primarily use grades.
Yeah. I feel like a good factor to take into account is also the support offered at schools. I don't think AP scores in particular are the best way to do, do that. Because I feel like in order to perform well on AP tests, you also have to have the time outside of school to put into the coursework. And a lot of students who have more time are able to do better on these AP exams compared to the ones who don't have the same support or the same time. So I feel like eliminating AP scores from that just from your data would be best and most effective. So definitely take into consideration the resources offered at the school.
Thank you so much.
So I appreciate the comment that student delegate Montgomery made about like thinking about what could be collected easily, right? And I feel like the spreadsheet that was created, that provided that detail really was a compilation of things that we commonly have in the school district. And really it's more about what is, what do we have at our disposal that we can use? That being said, there were a number of comments that were made about how we drill down much more deeply into understanding and getting much closer to the student. And that's where I think it's really incumbent upon us to think about what are the multiple measures that we use? We use one layer of, you know, the assessments and the, the different measures that we have commonly. But then what are the other pieces that we're layering in there? And I think that's really the critical piece about how we're using the data as one measure and then thinking about coupling and pairing that with other measures. And that's very similar to the work around the EL students' progress, right? You're not just looking at standardized assessments. In fact, in reclassification, you're looking at students' progress on the LPAC. But you're also looking at a number of other measures as a way of ascertaining the extent to which students are making progress. So I think it's important to kind of contextualize the work that we're doing here around these metrics to really be more about what is it that we have at our disposal? How do we continue to inquire and build and push on each other to understand a little bit more about the pieces that can complement the system? So that when we think about how we're progress monitoring and moving forward, it is not just about those data that are the common measures, but about the other pieces that complement. it is not just about those data that are the common measures, but about the other pieces that complement them that can come to bear. And I think that's an important aspect of this is that it's not just one source of data, it's not just standardized assessments. It's the suite of multiple measures. And how do we build as a system, a way to incorporate that in the ways that we think about our progress monitoring, our ways of thinking about how students are succeeding from both the board level and all the way trickling down to our classroom level? So I hope that answers kind of like the broad range of questions, at least on the, on the spectrum of limitations of some of the measures that we have and that the intention of the spreadsheet that we created was just to understand what do we, to Student Delegate Montgomery's comment, what do we commonly have that can be easily garnered or captured? So hopefully that answers kind of like a range of some of the questions that were asked.
Just a brief comment on that, I think one thing that might be useful, I don't know if you've considered this, would be, let's take for example, goal one, third grade literacy. If we said, okay, the summative assessment is S-Back, twice a year we do STAR. These are the types of assessments that best practice in classrooms, teachers might be doing read alouds or whatever. Even like a set of examples, which I know exists, right? But to have that together so that we're being clear as a system to the point you just made, right? Here's our satellite data, here's our map data and street data that teachers, so that, so that we're saying and sort of acknowledging that your point without, obviously, we can't as a board have the data from the classrooms because it's, it's not practical, right? But to recognize that we actually do expect our educators to collect that type of data, right, on their own. And then to say, is this matching with the standardized test data and other, that type of question that you're raising?
And teachers do actually do a lot of their own assessments and they have the platform called Illuminate, where they do enter that data so that even we can see. But this is, you know, by school by school basis.
To kind of bridge that to that, the conversation around data accessibility, I mean, the, right off the top of my mind, I come up, I think about like OUSD's data portals. I don't know if y'all have a chance to look at them, but I mean, they have an incredible amount of data beyond just actual assessments themselves. In addition to an assessment calendar that I think is pretty in-depth, I mean, you could get names every single level of assessment that's possible in the district and by month lays it all out and you can click into it and see everything. And, and I, and I just wonder, well, one, I think there's a huge amount of power in that. I mean, I know our neighbors have a different set of challenges than we do, but nevertheless, like have an incredible wealth of data available for the public and their educators and families to see and leverage. But I just wanted to be able to connect, I mean, you should be able to get granular with the kind of information that we have available as a system to the kind of data that we have accessible by the public broadly.
And to that point, one of, one of the things I was going to raise is it's great to see longitudinally how this is working. And, you know, certainly at, at our school site council, we would look how we did year on year with the same cohort or, you know, this year's third grade versus that year's third grade and so forth. But one of the other things on this that we have the power to do and would be wonderful to see is if we actually have, in a way, a benchmark against the same grade clusters or SFUSD so that a site can see how their site is doing vis a vis the others. Or even, you know, if we look at CDE data, then being able to understand how we're doing across all sites, across grade groups or at a particular site to be able to look at that. And what, but, but to this point of, you know, what sites look at, what educators look at, one of the things I'm very cognizant of, given that I do this for 300 sites across the country in my day job, is the training that then we provide our staff to be able to do this as well as the time. Because I'm fully conscious, I mean, our educators, our principals, everyone has their day job that they're doing watching our, our students or being able to educate our students. So is, it sounds like this system is relatively new or hasn't been around. And I'm curious, what, what do those researchers, how do you all think about the training that, that we provide to be able to enable our staff to use this wonderful system?
Well, we, in terms of the, the data dashboards, as Devin mentioned earlier, these are kind of revolutionary for our district. Kind of like groundbreaking, you know, for the first time this year, we've been able to do this. And part of that is kind of like, to be honest with you, we've been tinkering quite a bit for, and then imagining and re-envisioning this many times over. And the amount of work that it takes to kind of get this off the ground has been tremendous. But once we were able to get it off the ground, it really starts kind of with working at the very beginning of the year. I believe the last dashboard that Devin showed at the Admin Institute early on as a way of trying to build kind of that muscle and understanding of it. And I think the main thing that can come away from this, right, is that our previous ways of working with our school administrators was to work through the data disc, which are the PDF kind of reports that are very static, right? And the ability to be able to then transition that into, I can filter down to all sorts of different things in the dashboard was just revolutionary for us. So that started that piece at the beginning of the year. And then throughout the course of the year, we were like, one of the major pieces we were trying to push on was now that we had built the muscle on an end of the year, very static, it's the summative data dashboard. We're like, how can we build this in a progress monitoring way so that data can be refreshed as, as humanly possible as we can do it, given the amount of work and coding that has to go behind it? But then to be able to do it in as timely a fashion to be able to support our folks. So in partnership with LEED, we were able to have to basically meeting PDs with our school leaders that coincided with the STAR data being available and for them to be able to go in there and be able to kind of surf through and understand and build capacity in those ways. And I think it's one of those pieces that as we're building capacity with it, it's really kind of like, once you're tinkering with all the different filters, then folks are able to start to understand the power behind it, especially as Devin mentioned, when we show and highlight certain features that might elucidate some of the data that comes along with it. And I think it's a journey that we're going to continue on. I think it'll extend, as Retu mentioned, as we build out our licenses, how that then can parlay into working with our staff. And then eventually, if we can expand it out with provisions obviously followed to, to community.
I'm glad you brought that up, Jess. I was going to say the use of data PDs have been really important because, you know, then we're, we're in the room. And if somebody has a question, we can help them in real time, whether it's with access or understanding how the filters work or just really trying to, you know, meet the potential of what these dashboards can do. Those sessions have been really important and we've had several of them throughout the year. The other thing I would just quickly mention is just documentation, you know, making sure that we have accessible documentation. So you can click through and understand like, oh, how do I, how, like, why would I click on this? And what is that going to do for me? And what happens if I hover with the cursor over? Because then you get more information, we can build in more information from that hovering feature. So there are some things that I think are, I don't want to say they're obvious, but they're more self-evident than others. Like that hovering feature, how would you know, right? Unless you've gone in and played around and happened to discover that. So that's on us to provide documentation, which we always do when we put out a report like this one. So that, that's a, that's a key part of it. Then we also announce changes to the dashboards through the LEED bulletin. It's another way we could say like, oh, this has been updated, we now have this assessment data. So you can go in and see the latest assessment data, you could see the latest attendance data. So that's one way we try to keep people updated on what's there and also how to, how to use the dashboards. Thank you. Mr. Steele, if we can put five minutes onto the clock for final comments and questions. And then I'll open it up to commissioners for any remaining questions before we move on. Mr. Fisher, Ms. Fisher.
I've been called worse. Just in the spirit of feedback and getting to satellite data, I love the Tableau, it has been so much fun to play around in it. But I, I think that if I could ask for one feature, it would be, I appreciate how we're disaggregating now by PK, TK to five, middle school, high school. If we could have an all feature so that we could do an overall comparison, I think that would be super helpful as well. That's it.
Any other questions or comments?
I really appreciate the work to figure out like really what the data is and the expansion and public availability of data over really recent years. And I think that one of the things that I'd love to see the district and department work on next is how can we really do analysis to figure out like where the causation is and what is correlation or what is just demographics? So that we can reach our goals for monitoring of actually not just knowing what the numbers are, but knowing whether the numbers reflect an improvement and success in our student outcomes and of our strategies or whether they're perhaps reflecting something else. And when we're just at the level of looking at like, what are the numbers? That doesn't really give us that analysis. And I know Commissioner Gupta has brought up the fed-up Substack before. But I think that's a really good example of a community member who's gone into these data sets to say, you know, to take, to try and take a stab at analyzing and saying like, well, we're seeing differences in, say, our third grade reading, but is that reflecting a change in demographics or is that reflecting catch-up in loss of COVID reading? Or is that reflecting new curriculum introduction or something else? And so kind of digging deeper to figure out what it is that the data is telling us is really essential for the progress monitoring reports to be effective and for us to make sense of this data.
Thank you so much. I also know this is not the last conversation we'll have around data. And, and just so the board is aware, this will hopefully feed into a conversation now about interim, revised interim goals and guardrails that the superintendent will have conversations with over the next month. So thank you to staff and very much appreciate your presentation today. Thank you. We'll move to item F. We have three discussion items on our agenda today. One around Frontline Red Rover, another around a central office plan, and the last around board leadership response to board metrics. Given just the number we have of them, I know that Dr. Sue has asked staff to be as concise, brief and direct as possible in the work that we have in front of us. And so I will read out item F1, Fiscal and Operational Health Update, Frontline and Red Rover, and I'll pass it to Dr. Sue.
Great, thank you, President Kim. As the team is coming up to the dais, I just want to share with our community that we are working very diligently to make sure that we transition from our current payroll budget fiscal system that is currently called Empower into our new system that will be more reliable, that is actually used across the entire state, well, 60% of school districts in the state, that actually will be able to save us funding, but, but more importantly, to be able to accurately pay our employees, which, as I've shared before, is the most important thing for us because our employees do the amazing work each and every day for our students. So I'm going to hand this over to Marin Trahilio, who's going to introduce the, the members of the team that's here. And I'm really grateful actually for leadership of Frontline Enterprise that is here today with us. So Marin.
And I'm getting a hint, go fast, right?
Yes, you're, you're only getting up your-
Good evening, commissioners, I'll forego the formalities. Before we start, just to ground us, we're here to provide an update on Frontline and Red Rover, our ERP and HCM, new acronyms or something that we need to know. That's a good thing. The fact that we're talking about joining a system that works for California K-12 at this point is something that the system needs. This is complicated, you're going to hear a little bit about where we stumbled, how we are regrouping and how we are still committed to the goal light date of July 1. Okay, next slide. And you can skip the next slide after that. So brief history, back in March of 2022, our state fiscal advisors strongly recommended that we needed to modernize our system. They also at that time told us that we needed to before moving to a new system stabilized SAP. And they had urged the board at that time to put money aside for that journey. And they were not wrong, next slide. Because later that year, we hit a critical point and we had to declare a set of emergency, for those of you who remember. At that point, we brought in external experts to help us stabilize the system to some extent. We had to accelerate getting our, the business experts for those items and elements in HR, business service and payroll. And we had to bring temporary staff to help us, right? So this was a turning point. We were, we have calmed the system, I was, Dr. Clark emphasized this, to use the word that we have stabilized SAP is not correct. We have calmed the system, we cannot stabilize it. That's why we're abandoning it. So we had to make a choice and there were three of them. Number one, stay with SAP, you already heard we're not doing that. Number two, keep what we had turned on in SAP and cobble together other systems. Or number three, abandon the current system and adopt a new system. So we opted for option three. When selecting this new ERP, we applied, self-applied some criteria to guide the conversation. We wanted a system that was built for California K-12, that was known and had a successful track record. And it was something that was already built and fully integrated and that did not require so many consultants and was not that expensive to maintain. So that gave us only two options, next slide. One of them was PeopleSolve, one that you may know, the city uses it. We reached out to PeopleSolve first through the County Office of Ed in San Diego. They talked to us for a moment, then they ghosted us. Then they came back and said, you know what? You're very complicated, we can't help you. The next team was Frontline. They also looked at it very closely. And they actually said, not only can we help you, there's actually a part that we're not sure that we can help you, but we want to figure that out. And that was the configuration with the city, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. Very briefly, I'm going to ask Kathy Hopkins to kind of remind and educate everyone what we currently have.
Thank you. So this slide represents the current architecture that the district is using. You can see by the various cylinders, those are all each individual different systems that are kind of cobbled together in order to get the data out and our end result of people paid and retirement reporting done and accounts payable. You can see each of those are individual and some of them are connected through the black lines. Those black lines represent files. So they're not actually an integrated system, they're all individual systems that are connected by data files and through replication. If we go to the next slide, this is a representation of what our new system will look like, the new architecture, which is two systems only. So all of the other systems are being replaced within these two, making it a much simpler architecture and structure with data entry getting in one place and being used throughout those systems rather than dual entry or file transfers.
Thank you, Kathy. Yay, that's good, okay? So how much is this going to cost? Well, you can see that at the beginning, it costs a lot, right? Because we have to maintain both the current system alive as we transition to a new system. But if you notice, by 26, 27, we're paying about a fraction of what we're currently spending to keep SAP running. So if we go to the next slide, just for some reorientation, you see that I talked about Frontline, a fully integrated system. But you also see a new word, which is Red Rover, who's our human capital system, right? Frontline is the ERP, Red Rover is the HCM. Next slide. I think Dr. Sue has already mentioned Frontline at the talking points, built for K-12, used widely in California. And it's a system that now makes us part of a larger family of users because across the Bay, in Alameda, et cetera, they're using Frontline. Next slide. We are going to be part of 35 counties Office of Ed and 520 school districts that are going to be using Frontline. 60% of California uses Frontline. Next slide. So although Frontline has the functionality to support an HCM, we recognize that the functionality with Frontline had some area of growth. So we actually opted to go with another system. And because Frontline works really well with third party, that's not an issue. So we actually embarked on using the tool, which is extremely friendly. Red Rover is equally designed to support K-12 schools in California, they're an eager partner. Our sub-management went live with Red Rover, it went really well. And right now, if you apply for a job in San Francisco, you're using the Red Rover system. It works. So next slide, so again, we can skip this slide, it's just, we have more time. So where are we now? As you can see on the next slide, 74% of the technical elements of the system have been implemented. You see that there are some areas that we're going to talk a little bit in more detail that are in red and yellow. And I want to explain some of the tensions that have contributed to the status of those. Next slide. So at this moment, we have some tensions that I would group under complexities on managing a change, which takes time. They need to have clean data, which now you understand is very difficult to extract from the current ecosystem of mini ERPs and systems that we have. And the real challenge of doing the day-to-day work of building a new ERP while still doing the day-to-day work of running the organization. That is hard no matter where it is. It's even harder here, given how unstable our system is. There has also been significant leadership turnover and that has impacted our ability to maintain momentum and to move fast. Just things slowed down. We also can't lose sight that we had a failed implementation. Right? And so in the best of times, as I'm learning about ERP implementations, there are bumpy roads. So anytime there's a bump here, it feels like an earthquake. And rightfully so, right? So it takes time to build the trust and can maintain the momentum. Our team wants to get this right. They really do. But every time we stumble, it, it, it sets us down a little bit. Next slide. We decided as we moved to a new system that we wanted to adopt best business practices. You keep hearing sometimes how unique we are. But there are legitimate things, Commissioner Fisher, I think you'll be happy for me to say this, that are very unique and good things in San Francisco, you know, fight that need to be, right? Took me two years to figure that out. Okay? They did need to be. But it takes time to work that out and to figure out what's truly needed to be, stay the same and what needs to change. Because SAP is the way it is, extracting data, you already heard, is an issue. And lastly, it's unfortunate, but it happened. We had a system performance with frontline. As budgets were being developed and principals were working on it, it didn't go well. However, those issues, although not great, are not, they're better than what's happening with SAP. And in part of that, that's because we have a very strong relationship with frontline. And evidence of that is there here today. So I'm going to turn it over to Vice President of, what is your title? Service Agreement, Ms. Kirkpatrick, to talk about that.
Great. Thank you so much. We did experience an unexpected performance delay within one of our modules around budget. As principals and budget analysts were coming into the system to start working on their budgets, we did, they did experience significant slowness. We know it's a critical time in the implementation as well as time for principals to step away from their daily business operating in the schools and sincerely apologize for the delay and disruption that that has caused. As soon as the issue was brought to our attention, we mobilized our technical team. We sent folks onsite to begin looking at and testing the connectivity within the system as well as operating and diagnosing where was the slowness occurring? So we could quickly address those issues and get the, the team back up and running. We did, within the first week, put up a performance update, improving the system, which significantly got the system back up, but still really not at the level that we wanted it to be at. We continued over the next couple of weeks to continue to make increasing updates in the system and we continue to monitor that on a daily basis, making sure the system is performing where we need it to perform. As we look at the system today, we actually did have our IT teams meet today to really talk about the network infrastructure and traffic within the system. So again, trying to make sure we're looking at every element within the system to ensure that we've got that success. One of the things we continue to do is we're fully engaged with the team here. We meet on a daily basis just to make sure that our, our concerns that they have are being addressed critically and in real time. We know that this is, again, as we march towards July, we want to make sure that we have everything in place for the success of the team. We're confident that the team with, with the support here with the San Francisco team, you know, we're committed to the, the implementation and want to make sure that we see the success for it. So we're confident in the system in terms of it being on the right track forward and fully support the team as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Karleen. And it's worth noting that healthy relationships sometimes require some really adult heart conversations, which we've had candidly. They have not been always easy to have, but we can have them. And again, I want to reinforce that they are here today, which is new for us, right? So moving forward, I want to just pause here and have you read some of the key milestones that have been achieved by the team. Take a moment and see. If we can go to the next slide, there's more. And so at this time, I really want to pause intentionally and I want to thank the team that has done that because it hasn't been us here fully. It's been our DOT team, it's been the HR team, the payroll team, the benefits team, the budget team, the city and our principals. Together, we have and they have built, they have done pay comparisons. We have built a 25, 26 budget in the new system today. Okay, that's a major accomplishment. Figure out major workflows, working on purchasing, figuring out the relationship for the city. And for the first time that I can tell, we won't have to do a manual connection with the city. The system will be operationalized. On the next slide, you'll see that we have a plan to ensure we stay on track on our timeline, given the tensions that we address. So we go forward. So what you see is we've decided to chunk our work into two phases, phase one and phase two. For us to successfully go live on July 1, several core functions of HR, payroll and finance need to be implemented. You see them on the left. For us to successfully go live on July 1, we needed to think strategically about what could we defer and do after post-go-live that was not going to impact our mission critical goal of ensuring that every employee gets paid correctly from day one. Right? So that's, that's the change that we're, that we're showing you that. Beyond the technical work, we go to the next slide, we're also focusing on what I alluded, which is managing the people change. There's a lot of work to do there. We needed to get better at change management and project management. We needed to ensure that we continue to train staff on a system that works, but where they need to continue getting the support needed to learn and practice as much as they can. And on the next slide, you'll see our current best thinking of how we're going to get to 7-1. I want you to really see, phase one is blocked, right? These are parallel swim lanes of work that is happening almost at the same time by the same group of people who are still running the, the district. Right? So that is our, that, that's our process for phase one and phase two. We are continuing to train staff so they feel confidence, confident and on the, and we remain committed to the July 1. Sorry, I'm just somebody trying to talk. However, I want to pause here and say that should something change on phase one and we stumble on one of those critical swim lanes, it is important for us to pause and reflect on whether or not we will be ready to go live on July 1. At this moment, I'm here to tell you that we look, it looks good. But you can see how tight everything is. Should something change, and we heard from Dr. Sue, we will not allow the system to go live and we'd have to think of the next time for it to go live, which will be in January of 2026. I want to repeat again, that is not where we are right now. But this helps you understand why we would need to make such a critical decision, which is not an easy decision. The pain that we're going through right now is better than the pain we would have to go through if we decide to defer to January. It's a lot of work either way. And at this point, I just want to finish by saying on the next slide that this system, if we want to be student-centered, San Francisco deserves a system that works, that's stable. This effort has definitely brought up the need for us to remain fearless for everyone in the team. We need to be united to get this done. Social justice needs a system that works more than ever before, especially right now. We have a diverse team of folks in our team who keep us focused on our core values. This completes our update. We're ready for your questions.
I don't know where to begin, but just to start with, thank you for, for all your work. And, and so I'll just leave it at that. I will open it up for questions and we'll do a similar, like just one question per person. Thank you. Yeah. One question per person before we pass it off to staff to respond and then we'll come back for the second round. And you don't have to give a question if you want, but Commissioner Fisher, and we'll go over this way.
I would definitely also echo my thanks. Oh my gosh. So first of all, to have the folks from frontline here helping to diagnose, I mean, when we started to struggle with Empower, we had to hire A&amp;M as outside consultants and spend millions and millions of dollars to get absolutely nowhere with Infosys and Empower and bring in a whole central command team working out, I mean, for, it, it was so ridiculously painful. So the fact that you're here and working, thank you. Night and day difference. My question, and there is a question, I promise, is really on slide 25 on the updated implementation timeline. I just want to clarify the, the items listed in phase two, those are not currently in Empower. Those are not currently dependent on our currents, like, we can still get rid of Empower and have these phase two systems not impacted, correct?
Commissioner Ray?
Very good question, Commissioner Fisher.
Hi, and also many thanks for all the work that you're doing and the teamwork that's required to achieve this, especially given what we have been dealing with for, you know, for some years now. Thank you so much. I have a quick question, which is, there's a reference in the Commissioner Q and A to a payroll simulation being conducted on April 18th. How did that go?
Great question. So I'll have Dr. Clark and then Kathy ends her quick, or whoever.
I'll let you start.
Go ahead.
We're going to fight over it. It went well. So we've run our first simulation on a sample set of employees. This is, as you well know, a very large district with a very large set of employees. So we took a small sample set for our first simulation. It went very well. What, one issue that we did find that we knew we were going to come across was that our data is not staying in sync between the two systems because of dual entry. So we have been coming step back, figure out a plan, working with the district staff on making sure that happens while we're also doing what we've been doing, which is checking through the data and comparing data files to data files. As far as the system readiness and the calculations that occurred, there was nothing that I found at all that did not calculate as we expected. In fact, we found things that calculated better as we had expected we would. So I would say the results were very good. We're continuing to do simulations. We're getting ready to do another one next week on the entire month end for March 31st payroll, on the entire population of that payroll. And we'll continue to do the simulations through the end of the fiscal year.
I, I want to add just a little bit to that. For me, the biggest concern was when the data transitioned into frontline, if all things are equal, meaning the data looks the same, can the new system frontline calculate the pay the way that it's supposed to? And based on that first simulation, I also agree that the answer is yes. But I want to lift something up. And that is the data itself and the, and how clean that data is. In a perfect migration, you'd be able to extract the data, do a mapping and push it into the new system and then we're off with very little need to do manual manipulation. That's not the case for what we're seeing and we knew that because, again, you saw the bird's nest of all the different softwares. And so there is manual adjustments that will need to happen to clean that data up. The good news is, once the data is cleaned up, the system does calculate the way it needs to be. And I don't want to lose sight of that because that is a lot of work to ask the staff to do between now and go live. And in thinking about that go-live, that really needs to be acknowledged with the right support systems in place to ensure the staff can continue with their day job, hold Empower the way it needs to be held and help lift this up to get it over the finish line.
I just want to jump in here and appreciate that word of caution, if you will. I mean, in, in a former life, I was overseeing ed tech implementation for schools and I don't know of a single program that actually launched with perfect success. And, and so I guess my question there, just to build off, sorry, I know we're kind of out of order here, is like, what is the contingency plan? I mean, let's assume that all the, all the systems are greenlit and looks like it's good to go. Then July 1, it turns on and something breaks. Like, is there, what is the contingency plan there? Is the determination after July 1 to, to pause at that point or, or what does that look like?
Good question. And first, let's start with, part of the contingency plan was to adopt a system that works, right? That because with SAP, we had to build it. The pay comparison is critical. This is what normally every ERP system does. I was talking to the city. The city was actually happy that we are deferring some of the modules because they turned on all of them. And to this day, to quote one of them, said, the city hasn't used some of them. So in a way, though that's not how we ended here, it's good that we put some of the stuff away to really focus on what matters. That's what, that's how I would answer that question. I don't know, Candy or Kathy, if you want.
Sure, I'll, I'll give my opinion and this is, this is my opinion. Others may feel different. I think that over the next week or two, as we continue with the simulations, the district will have to make the decision about what we have in the system, recognizing that huge lift with the, a lot of the manual data cleanup that needs to happen and whether or not it wants to go forward with that process. Again, huge lift. If the decision is made to defer it, there needs to be, I'm going to use the phrase, real talk, because that means the district would need to stay in its current state and also continue with the dual entry and data cleanup, not just until July 1, but to January 1 or some other date. In the midst of making budget reductions and seeing staff, you know, capacity be stretched. In addition to that, the cost that were on the slide go to a certain, I think it all, a lot of it ends December 31st. And so if the goal is to go past that, there would be additional costs to hold up SAP and a lot of those other software that you don't see in that particular slide because that was built on the, the expectation. Certain things were going to expire by the end of this year. So you're talking, you know, staff that may not necessarily be here to hold all of it, additional cost. And I, you know, I've been in education for 20 something years. When you're adding costs for those softwares, it takes away from where we need the dollars the most, which is at the, at the school sites. But it, it doesn't mean it, it, it doesn't mean that you don't do it. It's just understanding the implications for those, those decisions.
Can I ask a follow-up question? I'm sorry to interrupt, but this is directly related to. So when you talk about the potential need for manual data cleanup and support systems, which is people, so I am looking at that slide 10 with the, the numbers on it. SAP in year 25, 26 is $927,000. Infosys is 1.6 million, right? So are there some small temporary investments in bringing in people to help with the manual data entry right now that you think we should prioritize that might save us millions of dollars over the 25, 26 school year? Do you have recommendations in that area for us as a board or leadership team to approve now?
Yeah. So on the first part, thank you for that. You actually have given me the funding to mobilize that. As it stands right now, in our inbox is a suite of, I believe, 15 individuals from Robert Half who have payroll experience and accounting experience for us to review. They stand ready to help us with door data entry should we need it. Tomorrow, we'll continue to talk about the actual lift. So that's one investment that I think is worth it if we need those extra hands. The balance there is sometimes it takes longer to train people. So that's why we ask for the right people from the very beginning so that we don't have to waste a lot of time with the training. But I know Kathy, you've been wanting to add something to this.
Yeah, I just wanted to go back to the question of, you know, a contingency plan, right? So I totally agree with everything everybody said. The best option is to get this thing live on time. Having said that, it's not a flip of the switch on June 30th or July 1. We will be continuing to run this current year payrolls into July and August out of Empower. And we'll be starting to run our frontline payrolls in July and August out of frontline. So the system will still be intact and we'll have that there. There would be a lot of lift to get it ready for a new year if we had to do that. So that's where that timeline, having this decision sooner rather than later, if that decision had to be made is important, as well as the costs. But it's not a switch that says we're turning it off if we don't have it ready to go.
Yeah, that makes sense. I mean, I equate it to like, if we're going to launch Chromebooks in a classroom, you should have paper materials ready on the backup, right? So like, what I'm hearing is that that's essentially the plan, is that you'll, we're going to have print materials and Chromebooks both ready, assuming that Chromebooks work. And if Chromebooks fail, then we'll, we have the paper to back up.
That's correct. We actually have a written contingency plan already in place that we can follow should we need to.
Great.
Excepted six different pieces of paper with all different instructions on them right now.
And to be clear on the metaphor.
Chromebooks really work, but the other way. Yeah, just to be clear, we just, we just got the wrong chargers for the Chromebook.
Commissioners, we have a time limit here. I just want to. I just want to confirm, reaffirm that that metaphor, the paper, we would not be making that decision on June 30th.
Right, 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 right.
We would be telling you way in ahead of that, right?
Yeah, that's some nice paper. Yeah, okay. Commissioner Alexander?
Okay, build on my paper metaphor. I will first thank you to our staff, especially the staff that are working so hard to do this, Dr. Clark and everybody. And then frontline, yeah, just echoing, it's so great that you're here and thank you for being transparent, accountable, and getting it done with us as a partner. That's really different than we've had in the past, and just really appreciate it. And I think my question was sort of similar. I guess one of the, I don't, I just use this as an example. One thing I've heard from principals was sort of feeling overwhelmed about learning this system, saying, "Why wasn't I able to just send a Google Sheet to some budget analyst and have them do it?" You know, that kind of question, which I imagine there's an answer to. But I guess more importantly, I, I guess there's, the question I think is like, are, how are we thinking about the impacts on the system? You know, I get it. Sometimes it's just like, well, we just have to push through and everyone has to learn this new thing. Right, so I'd just love to hear a little bit more specifically around the school end and kind of that. Does that make sense, the question I'm asking? And then again, what are the trade-offs? Or could we, could we hire more folks to help? Or are there other ways we could really push and get this thing done in a way that has the minimal impact on the system?
So this is transparent facilitation or ideation in this process. Definitely the, the benefits of a principal building their budget in frontline live is that they don't need to ask someone else if they intend to make this a .5 or .7 and use their Title I funds. That's the best thing, right? The downside is, it's a new system. It's clunky, like just any system, and it would be best if they had someone right next to them to help them. So I think we've all been talking about, how can we keep that part alive, which is one source of truth? Because what we don't want is to go back to another Google Sheet where a principal says, "Well, I updated it last night and you didn't look at it." That's not going to work, right? And at the same time, having been at a school site for over 10 years, I know what it's like, right? The fact that you can't even close your door. So how do we help principals there? So I think we learn a lot from right now. There's a big, a beautiful tradition of self-service in S of USD that I think we want to preserve to some extent. And I think, Dr. Sue, I think you're also committed to keep thinking of better ways to do this. So we haven't lost track of that. What I will say right now is that the idea of completely removing it from the principal does not seem realistic to me, right? And in a good partnership of both for one team, the site does their part, and Rob does that. We have to balance that. So, yeah.
I just wanted to add to the question of, you know, Google Sheets versus going into the system and having to learn a new system to do it. The value of doing it within the system is that the data is already there, right? So you can look to see what your staffing looks like. You can look to see what your vacancies are, as opposed to having someone in the team have to constantly maintain that, download it, put it into Google Sheets so that you can see it, and then re-upload the data in for changes. It's keeping it current and accurate and on time.
Mr. Steele, can we just put five minutes on to wrap up this portion here? And then I'll open it up to any other questions and comments before we move on.
So acknowledging that this is not a question, I just want to say.
Wait, 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 two minutes.
I haven't gotten to socket. That the entire district and the entire city are rooting for your success. We could not possibly have learned the lesson harder as a district and a city that these core systems are extremely vital, vital to our teachers, vital to our educators and staff, to students being able to have the supports that they need. And so just thank you for taking on this very high-profile job. And I know that you're all working really hard around the clock. And so just know that you have, you know, feel the wind at your back of everybody rooting you on for your success. We really appreciate the seriousness that you're taking this challenge on with, and we are rooting for you. And so to that end, my question is, Dr. Sue, are there any additional resources that the district needs from philanthropic or community partners to help with change management, training to make sure that people are ready, additional resources for temps, anything that we as a board or as a community can step up to help bring into the district in time to make this critical transition?
Thank you, Vice President Hulane. That's a great question. I know that over the last several weeks now, actually, if not months, we've actually had to increase our contract to, to increase the hours that Dr. Clark can spend with us because we need that level of expertise that Dr. Clark is bringing to the table. And so that was really important. But because of that, we, we would need additional resources to provide support for training our people. We've got thousands of people we need to train. We've started that training many months ago, but we all know you just can't train just once. We'll have to do multiple trainings and multiple supports. So any type of supports that our philanthropic community can provide us, that would be very, very much welcomed at this moment in time.
I'll say, oh, wait, you have Matt Alexander and your name tags are, I was like, wait. So Vice President Hulane, if, if there are experts on change, thank you. Like, if there are experts on change management that want to help.
Run like, do that, but yeah.
I'm sure that's someone's idea of an April Fool's.
If there are experts on change management that have done ERP change management and want to come and join the conversation, happy to talk to them and see how they can help. We, absolutely. We need doers, not just people who then say, "You should have thought of like, we need people right now." Happy to take that to help, I think, if it's helpful, for sure, yeah.
Unless you're a credential teacher, in which case we need you.
In which case, there are jobs that we have available for you.
Just to be clear. Commissioners, any other comments before we move? We have one minute left. Oh, we'll do Commissioner Gupta and then Commissioner Fisher can round us out.
So just echoing, I think Vice President Hulane said it incredibly well when she said, "The wind is at your backs," in terms of no, that we and the city and everyone is rooting for you. I cannot think of anything that is more critical for the school district in the short term and will be more redemptive in terms of saying, "Look, we understood, we heard, we will not pay our staff late or not have your payroll ready." And to that extent, I'm curious, in, in this, in the contingency, is there any chance whatsoever that we will not have paychecks ready in, in kind of the redundancy that you all are building? And if so, how do, you know, what, what is the pre-mortem that you're doing to make sure that that is not the case?
So it goes back to that conversation about to go live or no go, no, not go live, right? If you stay in the existing system, you still have all the workarounds that are keeping the system calm, and that would continue to move forward. I recognize the district is building the budget now in frontline. And so if the pivot needs to happen, we're going to figure out how to get that budget over into the empower system. When, I've been in this for 26 years now, have gone through many different implementations across a variety of organizations. And so whenever you go live, there's always the risk that something will be missed, right? And in this case, I'm going to talk about pay. So what, what I'm always concerned about is what we saw with the empower implementation, where there was an issue with pay and the system just would not do it. It would not calculate or process pay, hence why people were here spending the night, give us our money, like, that's an extreme situation. Let's talk about over here on this side. Based on what we've seen so far, I have a high level of confidence that the system can calculate pay. But let's say something happens, Marin's record is off. He's not on the right salary schedule. Based on what we've seen so far, someone can actually go into the system, correct his pay, and within 24, 48, or 72 hours, actually generate a check and have it in his hands. That's different from someone being camped out over here because we can't get the system to move. And so I just wanted to level set there because there may, there may be a situation where something falls through. It's 6,000 employees, thousands of records. But what happens when we figure out what it is? The question for me is, can the system respond, course correct, and do what needs to be done? And there are always situations where you can process pay the exact same day. Based on what I've seen so far, I believe the answer to that is yes. So for the folks who experienced the empower debacle, that hopefully will give them a high level of assurance that even if I'm an employee and something happens and my pay falls through the cracks, this system will allow the team to course correct and generate pay in a relatively short period of time. That's critical, and I think that's important for going forward with this process.
I, I really appreciate that, especially as a decision maker, to understand what that, what the potential consequences are or what the mitigation factor is so that we can, we're better empowered to make that decision. I mean, I, I guess one, one just really quick thing is, you know, kind of the converse of the question of what resources you might need, Superintendent Sue, is, is there anything that could potentially be? It sounds like a lot of this may be dependent on site staff, site administrators in terms of being able to get the implementation up and running. And I'm curious if there is anything we might be able to de-prioritize off the plate of site administrators or site staff so that they have sufficient time to be able to interact, engage, and be able to do this work?
I would just say, Commissioner Gupta, not for the pay, actually. I mean, this is the, to the point, this should be a boring, non-topic conversation moving forward, right? In K-12, people get paid. Yeah, so, so.
Wait, can you say that again? In K-12, people should get paid.
People should get paid. It's a boring subject and it just works, right? It, it does, it should not have a high dependency on the site leader to ensure that happens, except for monitoring for vacation, bereavement, and, you know, what we call those absences. Yeah, so I'm sensitive to the time, and I know Kathy, you wanted to say something, so.
I just wanted to say one thing in regards to the conversation about pay, right? What is, what's going to happen in July? Are we going to have paychecks coming out? So absolutely correct what Dr. Clark said. But just to be clear, I'm already running paychecks for July. Like, step increases are already done. We're verifying that data. I literally am running July payroll. We're also running our simulations for the current year, but we're able to do that in frontline. We're able to see the future, and I can see what the data looks like. And that's to the point of the budget development we talked about. It's real payroll data that we're using to develop the budget with, and that payroll data is available to print checks on right now.
Commissioner Fisher, last word? Word? Just kidding.
Well played. And LOL. That, I, I really appreciate that, that last framing. So Ms. Hopkins, first of all, thank you for all the expertise that you have brought in to help make this successful. You could be in a lot of different places and you're here with us. And so that's much appreciated. And I really want to go back to something you said about the data being in the system being key, not just for us as district leaders, but also for our community partners. As a former CAC member, we used to spend a lot of time trying to get, well, and still CAC member. You know, we, part of our oversight and accountability is monitoring vacancies, right? And, and to pull that information about vacancies of, of special ed teachers and PARAs and, you know, the related service providers, that's painful right now. And so to be able to have that data for it to be a click in a report, I mean, just, wow. I'm so excited about that, yeah.
Thank you so, oh, yes.
Well, I just, I just, I just want to greatly acknowledge Kathy for being here on the weekends. You know, I've, I've been here on the weekends with the team, and she's here. She's working with the team, helping them go through all those pay compares. I've been here, I've been over to 135 and I've seen the frontline team there providing real-time, in-person support to our principals. And I feel like this is truly the all-hands-on-deck moment. And I just greatly appreciate that you also recognize that your success is our success and we have to be, we have to be in this together. So just thank you so much.
And I say this with the greatest amount of respect. I really hope I don't have to see you again. Thank you so much.
Say it again.
Just at the citywide parade. We'll be throwing the ticker tape parade.
Thank you so much. Thank you. General Counsel, I'm going to propose that we move our item H, action items, up to right now so that we can have staff present and we can vote on that, if that's okay. Do we need to, is there any action or procedure we need to go down to do that? Any objection? Okay, in that case, we're going to suspend for a moment our discussion items and just go right to item H, action items. And I'll start actually backwards with item three. So item H3, 254-22SP3, Updates to Policy 5101, Student Assignment to Create TK Feeders from Early Education Schools. As staff come to the dais on that one, I also want to acknowledge that item 4, 254-22SP4, K2 Reading Difficulties Risk Screener Adoption, we are actually going to table, practically table that item, given new information from the state that we received today. And so more information is coming, and sorry, commissioners, that we didn't give you a heads up on that earlier. But just know that we're going to table that for a future agenda as well. So with that, I will go back to item three and, and pass it on to the superintendent.
Thank you, President Kim. To the dais, we have Assistant Superintendent Christine Herrera, as well as Executive Director Lauren Kohler from our enrollment. I still call it EPC because I, that's how I remember, that's how I enroll my children, the Enrollment Center, who's going to give us a, an update on the, our new TK feeder policy. And I'm just going to hand it over to both of these wonderful individuals so that we can go through the conversation, the deck.
Wonderful. Good evening, everyone. We're happy to be here. You can go to the next slide. So we're here to talk about some updates for our universal TK and implementation on a proposal for a feeder for our early childhood sites that have a TK program on campus. This slide just shows kind of the history of where we've been. Since 2023, we've added 64 TK classrooms. You can see that the slide, the picture on the left is where we were in 2021 and where we're projected to be for 2526. This year, we received over 2,000 applications for TK, which is a great thing. So next slide, please.
Alrighty. One of the things that we discovered as we've been expanding TK across the district is that not every site can fit a TK classroom. And so we've run into a handful of problems with that. This is because of facility constraints. Some of the schools are too small. The requirements for TK at sites are pretty stringent, and we want to make sure all CARES are safe. So we've been trying to think about how we make sure every attendance area elementary school has a TK program that feeds into it. And so the challenges that we are working to address are making sure that all of our attendance areas have TK. So this is to make sure that all families have fair access to TK programs and have the same tiebreakers for TK across the city. The other issue that we've noticed is that we have TK programs still at our wonderful, wonderful early education sites. And those families are the only TK families in the district that need to apply for kindergarten again. So right now, the TK students at elementary schools are promoted automatically to kindergarten at those elementary schools. The students at early education schools in TK need to do the lottery again. So this is two years in a row of a complicated process for them. And so we want to make sure that everybody's having the same equal experience with automatic promotion. And so our goals, when we were talking about exactly what we should do, were fairness for families, so making sure that all families have equal access to TK across San Francisco. We want things to be predictable because we know that simplicity and predictability are two of the really important parts of what families want from the assignment system. And so making sure that there's a clear pathway from TK at an early ed site to kindergarten. We want to make sure that the early ed sites were in the same neighborhood or as close to the same neighborhood as we could get so that there was a lot of proximity for families, so that we were able to place families closer to home. And then we know that making sure that we're doing everything we can to increase our enrollment is a really important thing for us to focus on at this point. Next slide. So here's the proposal that we have, TK feeder programs. So starting next year, we're, the applications for the following year for 2627, we'll make for every early education school and the MECTK programs, feeders for elementary schools that don't have space to have TK on their campus. So when applying to TK, a family would indicate which kindergarten feeder they wanted to. So when applying to TK, a family would indicate which kindergarten feeder they wanted to apply to. And we would use tiebreakers like attendance area and sibling for that kindergarten when the student was applying to TK. We'll talk about an example of this in a second, which I think will make it feel a lot easier. And then those students, once they're in that TK program, would be automatically promoted to kindergarten at their corresponding feeder elementary school, unless they wanted to apply elsewhere. And we wouldn't change their other tiebreakers, so they could still apply to other kindergartens if they chose to do that. Next slide. So let's do an example of this first. Glen Park is one of our sites that is unable to accommodate TK on its campus. So TK applicants who live in the Glen Park attendance area in this plan would get an attendance area tiebreaker to Hunapuro Sarah's Early Education School. So they would apply there to the Glen Park pathway. They would get the tiebreaker. If they had a sibling at Glen Park, they would get a tiebreaker as though they were attending Glen Park. If they got in at Sarah Annex, they would automatically be promoted to kindergarten at Glen Park at the end of TK. So this creates like a consistent pathway for these families where they have the same access to an attendance area TK as all other students in the city, and then they have the same promotion to kindergarten that's guaranteed to students going to any other elementary school. No further applications required here until middle school.
Next slide, please. Thank you. So this slide shows what the early education school site is and the feeder it would feed in for TK and K. So you can see here on the list, Argon Early Childhood Education School would feed into Jefferson Elementary's kindergarten program. The ones in bold are the ones that do not have space for TK currently. You'll see some on there like Mission Ed Center feeding into one of Vista Horace Man, Dolores Huerta, a second TK class, and Marshall. But the bolds do not have currently space for a TK classroom. Uh, next slide, please. This is just an illustration on where the early childhood education school is and the feeder schools that it'd be to. So for example, on the left-hand side, on my left-hand side, you can see Noriega Early Childhood Education School would feed into Sunset and Yuloa. Tulie Elk Park would feed into Yikwoe Peabody Nutrition, New Traditions, and you can see the correlation of the colors as well. Next slide. So our implementation plan. In February, we started engagement with our families. Actually, before that, in December, we met with our early childhood principals to see what they thought about this idea and their feedback on this. And answered a lot of their questions and thinking about the logistics. Then we launched a family engagement, a community engagement with families and teachers. We also met with elementary principals at the elementary school sites that would be receiving a TK feeder as well. And we're in spring right now in 2025, waiting for a final decision on the proposal. And then we would open up applications in October of, for 25, this, this year of 25 for 2627 applications. In December and spring moving forward, they would get their placements, and you can see the rest of the pattern there.
Alrighty, so we've done quite a lot of community engagement on this so far. We did five community workshops at different early education sites and virtually we had meetings in English, Spanish, and Cantonese. We, as Christie mentioned, work with the principals at early education schools and at the elementary schools with no TK. We got some survey responses from people who weren't able to attend community workshops, and then the principals also responded to a survey. We heard from about two-thirds of families that they agreed or strongly agreed with the proposal. And site leaders were very enthusiastic about this. About 90% of the people who responded to the survey who were site leaders were in favor of this proposal. Next slide. Okay, this is a very dense slide. We heard three big concerns while we were doing community engagement. The first one is, as you can see on the map, some of these early ed sites and the schools they're going to are pretty far apart. They're about a mile apart at the farthest. We really want to make sure that the policy is fair for everybody and that everybody has equal access to TK. And the best way for us to accomplish that is to build these neighborhood-based feeder patterns. However, that said, sometimes we can't get closer than a mile to the school that we want to promote kids to. And it's unfortunate, but it does make it more fair for everybody to have the same access, and so it seems like an appropriate trade-off. That said, as we are able to identify more classrooms and we've been working really hard on identifying more classrooms, we'll adjust the feeder patterns so that we can make things as close to people's elementary school as possible. Another concern, there's two schools that will still not have TK associated with their campus, Alice Fong Yu and Lilienthal. We're really focused on making everything fair for attendance area families and making sure that there's consistency and simplicity and predictability for our early education site families. So as we are able to find more classrooms, we will hopefully be able to include these two schools in feeder patterns, but we don't have the classrooms identified for them yet. And then the last thing is, we heard from families enrolled in the pre-K programs at early education sites who don't live in their feeder schools attendance area that they're concerned about losing a tiebreaker to TK at that early ed site. So the families in pre-K at Tulie Elk want to make sure that they can go to TK at Tulie Elk. And because when they applied for pre-K at Tulie Elk, they were under the impression they were getting this tiebreaker, we actually included that in the policy. We want to grandfather-in all of those families so that they're not losing a tiebreaker that they believe that they had access to. So we will do a one-year tiebreaker for any pre-K families to TK at their early education site. All right, do you guys have any questions?
Thank you so much. I will open it up for a question. Similar process, I'll do two minutes and then we'll start with whomever wants to start. Commissioner Fisher?
I would just like to thank you both for this hard work. And it's, uh, yeah. Thankless work too as well. You know, there's, there's no right answer, no matter what you do. Someone's, um, someone's always going to be frustrated with whatever decision we make. So thank you for balancing everything. And especially for respecting and honoring the promises or the, the perceived commitments that we had made to some of our families. It's really, really important. Thank you so much. We've talked a lot in student enrollment and student assignment systems in the past about predictability, proximity, and choice and the tensions between them. And so I think you did a great job of balancing a lot of that here, so thank you for breaking that down for us. The, the two questions that I have now, and they seem to always be the hardest in any enrollment system to address, are language pathways, the language programs, you know, or what does this mean for our students and families who come in who don't speak English? You know, our multilingual families. And also, we have special education programs in early ed. What does that look like for pathways into our elementary schools as well?
This is a great question. I'm really glad you asked about this, the special ed programs. So what we've talked about with special education is that we want all of our kids, general ed or special ed, to have the same pathway from TK to fifth grade without any interruptions. And because of the nature of the pathways for special education, because they're spread all over the city, this like neighborhood feeder model didn't make a lot of sense. So what we're planning to do is increase the number of classrooms on elementary school sites for special ed so that we're able to build like a continuous pathway for the pathways that we're looking at. So there's three special education classrooms at early education sites. There's two mild mods and a moderate severe. So we will be adding classrooms at elementary schools so that we can accommodate everybody who wants to go to TK at an elementary school in those pathways. So that way they don't need to even move schools twice. Does that make sense?
It's great news.
And I think the piece about the language pathway is really important as well. We were hearing from families that they were wanting more language pathways for TK. So we opened up a Japanese language pathway for TK and a Spanish bilingual as well.
Yep, and several more Spanish immersions at Mission Ed Center, which made us think we've been treating Mission Ed Center like a different entity than an early education site, but we really need to make sure that those families also have this feeder opportunity. Thank you for those exciting updates.
Neither Commissioner Ray?
Hi, I just wanted to follow up on a question that I asked in the Commissioner Q and A about impacts on pre-K families. I see that you have extended the tiebreaker, as Commissioner Fisher mentioned, or referenced for a year, which i- is helpful. But I'm, I'm wondering what that means for pre-K families afterwards. There was an indication in the answer here that the pre-K families would retain their tiebreaker to kindergarten at the attendance area school where the early ed site is located. So the tiebreaker impact beyond TK is unchanged. I, I mean, perhaps I'm not understanding this correctly, but are we saying that pre-K families are going to go to some, to a school? And that once the one-year period is passed, they could then have to go to a different TK? But then they would still be able to go back potentially to the, to the school they were at before, in essence?
No, hopefully not. So the hope here is for the students who are currently in pre-K, they thought that they would go to TK at their early ed site. But we're going to, there's another set of tiebreakers at work here in the attendance area tiebreaker set. And so those families will keep their tiebreaker to their attendance area TK or kindergarten. So instead of, we want to make sure that we're keeping our promises to all of the families who thought that they were going to get to go to TK at their same site. But for new families coming in, we'll explain to them as we're assigning them to pre-K that they'll have that tiebreaker to the TK or kindergarten at the TK or kindergarten of their attendance area school. Does that make sense?
So, so it, families after this initial period is over could start at a pre-K. They would not be, they would not have a tiebreaker to their TK. They could thus end up at a different TK. But once they did that, they would have, they could continue to go to that other TK. I mean, the K that that TK is associated with. What if they wanted to, for whatever reason, return? Or what if it was just easier for them to have a path at the same place all the way through? Is that essentially not possible for us to accommodate?
So for the early education sites, it's already not possible for us to accommodate that because they end at TK. So the students could go there for pre-K and then TK, and then would need to trade or change sites for kindergarten. So this, instead of changing sites at the TK kindergarten break, they would change sites at the early ed TK break. It's just moving the timeline at which they change sites up a little bit.
Okay, so I guess my fundamental question then is, is there some way that people could start at pre-K and just continue? TK, K, and so forth. Is that a feasible thing to do?
So at some schools, yes, in our current setup, but most of our schools don't have pre-K and TK at an elementary school site. Okay, so are you asking, can they go to pre-K, TK, and then kindergarten?
I'm essentially wondering, can we just simplify this from the earliest possible point? If the earliest point we take kids is pre-K, can we make it so their families could just go straight through?
At the same site?
In order to, or with wherever they expected to go from when they got into pre-K. So they would know from that point, right, you know, just to sort of make this all easier for families.
So, yeah.
It may not be possible. I'm trying to find out if it is.
Yeah, I love this idea. The, what the requirements are for pre-K is slightly different than the requirements for TK. They're based on different laws. And so everybody who's in pre-K can't necessarily go to TK at the same site because you can go to pre-K if you live anywhere in California, whereas TK is specific to our LEA. So I hear you. I think it would be great to simplify this more, and I think that we're doing as much work as we can to get the policies to look like each other and the application process to be the same so that it's easier for families. But just because of the different laws that are here, we haven't made that switch yet. I think it's something we could talk about.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yeah, I, um, the, the last, it's just been really difficult for me to listen to the last 15 minutes of complexity because I think it exemplifies all of the things that are wrong with our enrollment system. And I appreciate the work that's been put into this, and I think within the confines of our broken enrollment system, this is a great sort of problem-solving exercise. But our enrollment system is broken. And the Board of Education voted in 2018 to change to a new zone-based system, or sorry, in 2018 to change the system and in 2020 to go to a zone-based system. And it's five years later and we haven't done it. And now here we are trying to put another jerry-rigged system for, because we have TK, which is amazing. So now we're trying to integrate it in to a broken system. And I just, it's nutso to me. And I don't, like, it doesn't make any sense that we can't plan big picture for the future and actually tackle once and for all our enrollment system. Families, this is the number one reason families give for not enrolling in SFUSD is the elementary enrollment system. It's chaotic, it's unpredictable. It's not a choice system because people, it's a lottery, right? So people don't actually have choice. They put their name in and they maybe get it and they maybe don't. So I think it's great that, that TK, to add predictability to TK, but I'm just, I, I'm really concerned that we're once again taking on this little piece of it and trying to jerry-rig something in and avoiding the problem. So I, I may vote no on this just for that reason. I mean, again, I think it's for, for the TK problem, I think it's a, it's a good solution and appreciate the work that's been done on it, but I just, I've, I've been on the board now more than four years. And that entire time, like the, the vote to actually go to the zone-based system was made before I was elected to the Board of Education. And every year, I've been told by staff, well, we can't do it this year, so we'll do it next year. Oh, we can't do it this year, we'll do it next year. Oh, we can't do it this year, we'll do it next year. You know, we spend over $3 million a year on an enrollment department that most other school districts don't have. Sorry, I'll stop ranting because the timer's going off. Why can't we have a, a stable, predictable, neighborhood, zone-based system that most districts have? And then have kids go to schools where they, near where they live? And I think in San Francisco, schools would be almost as diverse, if not more diverse than they are now.
Is there a question that you wanted to ask or just?
My question is why, but it doesn't need to be answered. When do we get the zone? But it doesn't need to be answered. I understand, I understand. There are, but I, I just, yeah, that's my.
Thank you. Thank you for your thoughts.
I think, I can't answer the zone question, but what I can answer specifically is that the reason why we brought this to you is that it didn't seem equitable that our TK programs that are on early ed sites don't have the same feeders that TK programs have at elementary schools. And so I totally hear you about the other piece of it. But we're, we were presenting this about just equity for all of our TK families, yeah.
Vice President Healy?
So I think that Commissioner Alexander.
Sorry, before you go, can we vote to extend our meeting? Sorry.
Can I motion on the floor?
Oh, I'm, I'm motioned to.
So moved. Or seconded.
Thank you. Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Gupta?
Yes.
Vice President Healy?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward?
Oh, she, she had to excuse herself.
President Kim?
Yes.
It's excise.
Sorry, go ahead.
So I think Commissioner Alexander's and my nameplates were accidentally switched at the beginning because I meant to say all the things that he said about the zone assignment system. This like reminds me of the campaign when we could give each other's answers because we heard each other talk about it so much. So thank you for raising that, Commissioner Alexander. And to Commissioner Ray's point, I think, you know, part of the concern, as I understand it, is that we can't have kids go all the way through at one facility because our facilities essentially have not been retrofitted to meet all the legal requirements that PKs and TKs have for specialized facilities and first-floor access and things like that. So this is again a Band-Aid, but as, as our facilities planning on our new bond comes up, thinking ahead toward how we can integrate that so that we have more facilities that allow families to have just an easier enrollment experience throughout their time in SFUSD would be great. About this specific policy, I just have a couple of outstanding questions, and I really appreciate you engaging with my many questions back and forth throughout this process and for presenting this to the board so that, and the public, so everyone can understand. One of my specific questions is, have all of the feeder patterns been cross-checked against start times and commutes? Because I assume that there will be a significant number of families who have students at both the main K through five campus and the EES campus. And they may have students close in age. For example, a TK student and a first-grade student, like both need to be walked to their classroom and can't just be dropped off outside. So if those schools start at the same time, but there is a commute of 20 minutes between them on a bus, how is, that does not actually help the equity and accessibility issue that we're trying to reach? So do we have confidence that either, you know, there's before care at one of the schools or one school opens earlier or, you know, have we made sure that we don't have 7:50 AM EES starts paired up with 9:30 AM, you know, K through eight starts so that? So that families also are spending two hours doing drop-off in the morning?
That's a really good point. So at first we thought, oh, we'll just match them to the elementary school. And then that was absolutely not the answer because of what you're saying. And so our early ed sites are open from 7:30 to 5:30 because of our early childhood programs. And so we're working with the elementary schools to see what would be that start time. So if it's a 7:50 start time, should the TK program at the early ed start be 8:30? And not be such a gap, right? So we have a little bit of flexibility with our early ed starts to not have them be aligned to the elementary schools because we're open for 10 hours every site. So we're working with each elementary program to see what would be the best start time for families that have kids in both locations.
Great. And then my other question is specifically related to Buena Vista Horace Man. We've heard a lot from the community about the stresses that moving locations is going to put on them while they get their wonderful facilities upgrade. But they're going to be at MEC for TK under this plan. And then students will be all the way down by McLaren Park for the other grades. And it's quite, there's not, it's quite a long commute. It's like a 10-minute walk to the 14 and then a very long bus ride for transit. Like, are we going to be able to provide transit options? Are we going to be able to temporarily house this additional TK at the temporary BVHM site? So families don't have to make that leap? Is there any, have we had engagement with them specifically about what works best for their school community?
We haven't engaged with them specifically about what works best for their school community. I've heard the concerns that you're mentioning. I don't think that the site plan for the temporary site has space for TK. And Buena Vista has not had TK in the past. So I totally hear you. It would be much more convenient for us to put it at that site. I don't think that it's possible for us to put it at the June Jordan building.
But there is a TK site that's near June Jordan, isn't there? I'm forgetting it's McLaren.
Yeah, McLaren is close to there.
Like, would, you know, would we be able to put them, have their TK feeder at McLaren for the years that they're located at June Jordan? So they, there's just one drop-off point? Just seems like it's, yeah, at least for a few years, going to be pretty difficult for those families.
Yeah, that's a great suggestion. We can definitely talk about that instead of ER Taylor, which I think is one of McLaren's feeders. That makes total sense.
Thank you. Any other, I don't have any questions. Okay, great. Thank you both so much. Very much appreciate this policy. And we will turn it over to a roll call vote, please, Mr. Steele.
I'm sorry if I missed it, but did we move in seconds item?
No, probably not.
Okay.
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Okay. On the update to the policy 5101, Commissioner Alexander?
No.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Gupta?
Yes.
Vice President Healy?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisman Ward, President Kim?
Yes.
Five vases passes.
Thank you. Thank you both so much. Very much appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
We're gonna go now to item H1254-22SP120252026. Oh, oh my gosh, 2025, 2026. Goodness, it is late. Sabbatical awards for United Educators of San Francisco Unit Members. Superintendent Sue?
I'm just gonna hand it over to Associate Superintendent Amy Bear.
Thank you. I have the next two items. And these are contractual obligations that we have with our certificated and our administrative units to honor sabbaticals for these groups. They come at a significant cost. The first item for certificated staff is a $14 million item for 62 certificated teachers to take a sabbatical. The reason the cost is so high is we pay the educators 60% of their salary while they're on sabbatical. And then the district backfills their position with a temporary employee. So it's the equivalent of 1.6 FTE for each employee. That also brings up some staffing issues that the board should be aware of, that we're hiring. You know, when you take a sabbatical, you're entitled to go back to your same position. So we need to backfill those positions with temporary employees. As an example, one school will have five staff on sabbatical. So that will mean five temporary teachers at that school for a year. Are there any questions?
Are we required to approve these sabbaticals under the collective bargaining agreement with UESF?
Yes, the agreement is, the language was written that we shall approve these sabbaticals.
I'll move to approve the item.
Second.
Roll call vote, please, Mr. Steele.
Thank you. Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Gupta?
Yes.
Vice President Healy?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisman Ward, President Kim?
Yes.
Six eyes.
Are there any questions about item 2254-22SP2 2025, 2026 Sabbatical Awards for United Administrators of San Francisco Unit Members? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote, please, Mr. Steele.
We move this one as well?
Oh, yes.
Some moves.
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Sorry, Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Gupta?
Yes.
Vice President Healy?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisman Ward, President Kim?
Yes.
Six eyes. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there another presentation? Oh, no, no, no. We're good. Okay, thank you very much.
You can open up the sunshine.
Yes, okay, so I'm gonna go backwards in the agenda. Oh, I'm, that's probably why I was getting confused by it. Okay, we're gonna move backwards in the agenda and move to item G. Public hearing and adoption, item one, sunshine, initial proposal from SEIU. And I turn it back over to you, Ms. Bear.
Thank you. You were wondering why I was still here. I understand, yeah. So this item is to sunshine the SEIU bargaining proposal. Government code requires that initial bargaining proposals are presented at a public meeting. So this is the SEIU sunshine to do a full contract re-opener for the contract expiring June of '25. And the district will bring our sunshine to a future board meeting. Are there any questions?
Sorry, I just read the script, so I will go ahead and read that out loud. I now open the public hearing on the initial proposal for a successor contract from SEIU Service Employees International Union 1021 to the San Francisco Unified School District. Dr. Sue has called on her designee, Amy Bear, Associate Superintendent of HR, to report on the initial proposal. At this time, I invite the petitioners to make any presentation they have regarding the material revision. And then we'll take comments from the board and superintendent before we take public comment. Oh, and there's no one presenting on that, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Are there comments from the board or superintendent on this item? Seeing none, are there any comments, commenters from the public?
Did not receive any cards.
Great. Let's do a roll call vote, please. And do we need a motion for this as well? Right, I'll motion.
Second.
Roll call vote, please, Mr. Steele.
Thank you. President Kim, Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Gupta?
Yes.
Vice President Healy?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisman Ward, President Kim?
Yes.
Six eyes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bear.
Thank you.
And then moving back to item F, discussion items, item two, central office plan, I turn it over to the superintendent.
Yes. Thank you, President Kim. Today I want to share with you and the public our plans for how we're going to address the second part of our budget reduction. So as you all remember, we are facing a $114 million reduction to our $1.2 billion budget. In order for that to happen, we are proposing three strategies to, to reduce our budget. The first is to review all of our contracts. And in this presentation, you will see which contracts we are looking at. The second is to create, and, and to create greater operational efficiencies through reorganization and redesigning of our central office and the way that we function and do the work. And then third is the reduction in force. And that is, of course, the most painful, which is what we've heard already today during public comment, the most painful part of our budget reduction. So I am just gonna go quickly through this budget presentation. Thank you. Sorry to pull it up. Walked away from the budget and then, or the presentation, and then I have to find it again. Okay, so the guiding principles, as we've already talked about at a number of times, is that student outcomes don't change until adult behaviors change. And that includes how we are going to reimagine and re-envision central office. We need to focus our work on student outcomes, families and community well-being, as well as creating a sustainable and organization, and organizational excellence. We need to prioritize programs focused on teaching, learning, leading, and student wellness. And we need to strategically reorganize and merge central office programs and services to achieve system-wide fiscal sustainability. Next slide, please. So this reorganization will do a number of things. One, it will increase our integration of the work with our vision, values, goals, and guardrails. It will allow our staff to be more nimble and efficient in how they work together. It will ensure that there is coherence and collaboration across our departments and divisions. We hope that it will decrease the staff silos. It will decrease the, the duplication of work. And it will decrease the barriers and the silos that we have and that I've seen over the last six months across our divisions and departments. You all have seen, and we've talked about this, where central office, the proposal for reduction within central office is to reduce central office positions by 205 FTEs. That equates to almost $34 million. Next slide, please. Of the 205 FTEs that we are proposing to reduce, 75 are currently vacant. There's 30 that are, 30 positions that will be taking the SERP. And we do not plan to rehire for those positions, which leaves us with 100 positions that will be laid off. That is, that are people layoffs. Of the 205 positions that we're proposing to eliminate, 72 are in the management classification. The subsequent slides show a little bit more detail about what that would look like within central office. You will see here the breakdown of divisions and departments across central office and the current FTEs, the current positions that we have in each of these divisions, the proposed reductions to those positions, where will we, where we will be after the reduction, as well as the percentage of the cost or the percentage of the positions within the context of central office. So for example, the first line within central office, we see business services, where there are currently 70 FTEs in that division. We are proposing to reduce nine positions from that division. That will leave 61 positions after the reduction. Currently, business services represents 6% of central office. After this reduction, it will represent 7% of our central office. You can do this across all of our divisions. But if you go down to the bottom, you will see that currently we have 1,080 FTEs within central office. After the proposed reduction, we will land at 875 positions after the reduction. The next two slides, I'm going to ask our Senior Director of Special Initiatives, Ms. Melly Laugh Smith, to walk you through.
Thank you, Superintendent Sue, and good evening, Commissioners. And thank you for this opportunity to share more detailed information with you. I did want to say that while this preliminary analysis is going to talk about numbers, we're really aware that behind these numbers, there are people and that these are really difficult decisions that we're making with real-life implications. So while the possession, presentation is going to be focused on numbers, I just want you to be aware that we're very aware that behind every number, there's a face. So this, what I want to show with this chart is the, sort of the preliminary analysis of the cost savings due to the reduction of those 205 positions that Dr. Sue mentioned. The chart has both, each column is identified by a letter. And then we do have some color coding in, in the columns to help folks follow, follow along. So what we're looking at in column C, the blue column, is the total reductions from both restricted and unrestricted funds for those 209 positions, the 33.9 million that Dr. Sue mentioned. The next column, the green one, is, is, and the yellow one are showing you the breakdown. How does that 33.9 million, what is the breakdown between the restricted funding and the unrestricted? So in column C, you can see that from restricted funding, about 20.8 million is coming. That 33 million, you have 20.8. That comes from restricted. And then in the yellow column C, we, about 13 million, maybe 13.1, of the reductions of that 33.9 million comes from unrestricted. So that, that gives you sort of where we are with the restricted versus unrestricted. We also wanted to share with you today the analysis we've done, starting to look at the reductions in unrestricted from the non-FTE side. And when we say non-FTE, we mean not positions. So contracts or other ways of leveraging our restricted funding. So column E, A, B, C, D, E, my glasses are definitely needing a, an upgrade, notes the non-FTE reductions, and that's in the amount of, oh, F, thank you. I literally cannot see from here. F, thank you, of 3.8 million. And that is coming from contracts, and we'll talk about that in the next slide. And then the other thing that, oh, not next slide yet, when I get to it, sorry. The other thing we want to talk about is, we did talk about how do we more strategically leverage our restricted funding? So we were able to move $3.7 million of positions that were on the restricted fund onto the unrestricted, sorry, on the restrict, unrestricted to the restricted side. And then the next column, E, F, G, H, is the total savings we have on the restricted side. So that's column E, F, and G. And then column I gives you the total sum, when we look at FTE and non-FTE, of $41.4 million savings towards our $114 million goal. And this slide has even more colors and numbers. It has a lot of detail on it, but we did want to sort of break this down to look more carefully at contracts. And these are just contracts that are funded by the unrestricted funds, right? Because that's where we have the savings. So you can see, we have the pie chart that sort of matches up with that chart. So the yellow, which is column C, it, I mean, A, B, C, yes. Column C is the amount of the $116 million of contracts in unrestricted funds that goes towards restrict, required costs, right? That's $82 million. And then the blue kind of tells you, that's the one-time funding. That is mostly for the frontline ERP system, which you discussed earlier today, and the resource alignment initiative. Now, those funds are one-time funds, so when we cut those costs, we don't have those costs to, to use for other things. But it does, they come from our fund balance, but our unrestricted fund balance. So while we'll cut those and reduce them, we don't have money to reinvest in other areas. And then the green slice is D, and that's where we can look for savings. And it's about $10 million. So while we do have a large amount of money coming out of unrestricted monies for contracts, when we start really breaking it down, there's not quite as much savings as we would like. We did look a little bit more carefully at the required costs. And we did that in sort of the rose color because there is savings in our required costs, right? If we can hire more staff, we can reduce our reliance on agency nurses, on other related services and things like that. So there are, there are savings to be made there. And that, I know that Assistant Superintendent Regina Piper is doing a lot of work on that. We're looking at reducing our agency contracts. So when we looked at this, our proposal right now is reducing services at SFUC administrative offices, a $1.5 million reduction in general ed bus services to middle school students, and a $2 million reduction. and a $2 million reduction on our reliance on agency nurses. I do want to say, we haven't finished Central Office budget. So this is our proposal today, and we're going to keep looking deeper at that $10 million to see if we can have more savings out of it, as well as the rose-colored numbers.
Thank you, Meli. The next section is to show you the proposed Central Office reorganization. I will say that, as Meli mentioned, this is, these are really difficult conversations. This is really difficult decisions that we have to make. But I do believe that these are the right decisions to make so that we can build and achieve the level of efficiency, accountability, and coherence that our students and families need. So, next slide, please. So this slide represents my executive team at this moment in time and the proposal of where we want to go. As you can see here, we're making significant reductions to several members of my senior team. So that by next school year, we are looking at a executive team that is comprised of five people plus myself, which means we'll have a Deputy Superintendent of Educational Services and School Operations, as well as a Deputy Superintendent of Business Services and Operations, the Associate Superintendent of HR, our Head of Communications, which is now a merged position with multiple positions inside it, and then, of course, the General Counsel. Next slide, please. So this is a, a new word I'm learning is a double-click. Here's a double-click into, into what would it look like for my new cabinet, the new superintendent cabinet? And so this is what I am envisioning for the cabinet to move forward. Underneath, the Deputy Superintendent of Educational Services and Operations, of School Operations, we will have a new Head of Academics and Accountability. And what this means is that I'm merging academics with our research, research planning and accountability team. So we're moving that team closer together. We'll have a Head of Schools, and we will have a Head of Special Education and our SLP. And this is really to, wants to bring back the position that we used to have before. Because we used to have a Head of Special Education, and we reduced that head down to an Assistant Superintendent. Under Business Services and Operations, we are looking to hire a Financial Services Officer. Currently, we have an interim in this role. We're also looking to hire a Technology Services Officer. We also have an interim in this role. And then, of course, we want to hire a Head of Operations, because right now, Meli is doing that job, multiple hats. Of course, we will continue to have our Associate Superintendent of HR and our Head of Comms and Governance. What you'll also see on the slide is the assignment of our goals and guardrails into each of these positions. Because what I want is for us to be able to, as a cabinet, hold ourselves accountable to achieving these goals and guardrails. That there's no more, it's your job, or this person's job, or that person's fault. It is all of our jobs to ensure that we're moving the needle on these goals and guardrails. I will mention that in developing and designing this new org structure, I worked with a consultant that is providing supports to other K-12 districts throughout the state of California. And so he's helping us think through what are the best practices that other LEAs across the state is doing, and how we can maximize what we are doing here in the district. And the next two slides are further double-clicks into what each of these workstreams look like. And honestly, for this slide here, it represents what our Deputy Superintendent, our current Deputy Superintendent of Educational Services and School Operations is currently responsible for. This is Dr. Carling Aguilera-Fort. And these are all the people that he supervises. And there are even more clicks underneath each of these individuals. And as well as our Head of Research Planning and Assessment, Dr. Ritu Khanna. In the new iteration, what I am proposing are these three heads so that there's once again more and greater coherence across the system of schools, of academics and accountability, and of special education, so that we can have that level of accountability held in that structure. I'm also showing here the leadership changes, the staffing changes, the positions that will be either eliminated or changed so that we can meet this new model. We are going from 19 positions down to 15 positions, which once again represents a reduction of our leadership team right now. The next slide shows what will happen on the operational side. Once again, of note is that I want to build that level of coherence and consistency across the system. We are going from 24 positions down to 15 positions so that we can have greater accountability and greater oversight over major systems in our district. I will say that this reduction in Central Office represents now 16% of our budget. 84% of our budget will go towards supporting our schools and supporting our school community. The 16% reduction is quite painful. However, I firmly believe that we will be able to achieve the goals that we have laid out for ourselves. We will be able to continue to provide the supports for our teachers. We will be able to continue to pay our staff, as well as continue to support our principals and gather the data and make sure that our curriculums are aligned with what our schools' needs are. But it does represent a very hard transition for a lot of people. However, this reduction will bring us in line, actually a little lower in line, with other school districts across the state. Just a few years ago, our Central Office was hovering at 25% of our budget. With this reduction, it brings, again, our Central Office down to 16% of our budget because we really want to focus our funding and our resources towards our schools and school community. I'm going to pause here and entertain questions.
Thank you, Meli, and thank you, Superintendent. I will go ahead and open up for questions, one question per person for now, and I'll put a two-minute timer on. And then we will see where we go.
Thank you. I just want to say how deeply I appreciate this work. I know, well, I mean, I have a sense of how difficult this must be for you, and I'm sure it's much more difficult than, you know, my senses is able to extend. But I just really appreciate this, and I'm glad to see Commissioner Alexander's work, among others, coming to fruition in reducing the size of Central Office so we really can focus on student outcomes. I appreciate the focus here on goals and guardrails and accountability. So I just want to thank you for that. I have a couple of questions. One of my questions is whether the, I see $34 million in total savings from the 205 position reductions. I have a question regarding how that relates to or interacts with the cost of the buyouts. So if you could address that, that would be great, like how much we're spending for the SERP buyouts. And I also, I actually don't know if Mr. Duchan is on. I don't know if it's possible to pose a question to him, if he is. Could someone let me know?
I do believe he's on. Mr. Duchan, are you on Zoom? Maybe it's because I said Mr. Duchan. Elliot, are you on Zoom? Okay, interrupt us if you are.
Okay, well, I mean, I'll ask it, and perhaps he can address it later, or maybe somebody else knows. So essentially, I'd like to ask Mr. Duchan and Ms. Lauson, I'm not sure if I have her name pronounced correctly, whether there's anything in this proposal that they have concerns about? And if so, what are those things and why? That would be helpful to know. And if, you know, Superintendent Sue or Ms. Lausmith, if you had an opportunity to discuss with them, please, you know, let me know if there are any concerns that they've raised. Mr. Duchan is on. Mr. Duchan?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Let me hang on a second. All right. Boy, that blanked my screen all around. Okay. Basically, this represents, as Dr. Sue said, a much more traditional and simpler district office struggle that I think will go a long way to improving communication and efficiency in the district office. You still, there's a lot of work to be done. We are in the process of analyzing the cuts that are proposed for the Central Office in this plan. And have not really come to a conclusion yet. As you know, you still have an uphill battle with your budget, but I think this is a major first step. I don't know if that answers your question, but.
Thank you. Hopefully, we'll hear more from you and Ms. Lauson if you do have concerns. Thank you.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yeah, just to echo Commissioner Ray's gratitude for the work here. And I, yeah, this has been, I think, necessary for a long time, not just for the budget cuts, but I think because of what Mr. Duchan just said, which is that it's actually a much, we're beginning to streamline the Central Office and make it more effective, like more effective school districts. So one of the things that the 2023 Budget and Legislative Analyst Report noted, as Superintendent said, was that we were spending 25% of our budget on Central Office compared to 18% in the 12 peer districts they looked at. But also, we were spending it in different ways in that some of those districts, like Long Beach and others, had actually better outcomes for students and that there was some association perhaps with how they were spending their money and how they were organizing their Central Office with that, those outcomes. So gratitude, lots of gratitude for this work. And then I guess my question would be, maybe along the lines of what Mr. Duchan was saying, I would love to see a little more detailed analysis of, you know, looking back at that BLA report and the peer districts, how are we aligning, or not, if we're making different choices, the different departments? Like, how much are we spending on CNI as compared to technology, as compared to HR? So that, sort of like slide, slide, what number is that? Six, the one with the list of FTEs. How does, that's a great comparison for SFUSD, like current state as to next year. How does that compare? Again, ballpark, big picture, how does that compare to peer districts? Maybe looking at that report, just again, so that we have a sense of like, you know, that we're in the guardrails here of best practices around effective districts in California would be great. Not today, obviously, that's a, I'm not asking you right now.
I echo what everyone's going to say, which is thank you for, I think, doing this really difficult, but important and in many ways overdue work. And, you know, showing folks that the district is willing to make cuts, especially those away from school sites, to protect kids and their experience in the schools. One question that I have is, I really appreciate Slide seven and beginning to show us where cuts might be able to be made for contracts in that column F, with a tiny, tiny F. And question I have is just, do we think that that is all that there is? Because it's a very small percentage of the overall cuts as we work to get toward that $114 million, you know? Not quite, not even $4 million in contracts. Is it possible that we're so leanly contracting that that's all that we have that we can cut on that front? Or do we expect to see additional contracts or additional cuts maybe? Or non-renewals next year or things like that? Does part of it depend on the contract cycle? I'd just love to hear more detail about that particular issue.
I will continue to echo the appreciation and deep gratitude. Also, just recognizing that this has been in a year of immense changes, and we have changes that are being felt at our Central Office as well. So much respect to the folks who are there currently, who are continuing to show up each day. Yes. My question is more of an assumption that I want to clarify of, I assume that the next step after this, and perhaps this work is already happening, is to better understand, I mean, behind all of these titles are not just people, but also like workstreams that are definitely taking place. And a question of, we have to do less. We are just simply doing too much. And what does that look like to strategically abandon certain workstreams, to reassign that work, to re-scope roles? And the ultimate end goal here is what kind of clarity can we provide around the work that is going to continue in service of supporting our schools and sites? Knowing that org charts are very helpful, and they do provide a very concrete picture of what will happen eventually. But just what is the programmatic impact and the service impact that we know will be felt by our sites? Both the good and the bad? Wait, yeah, both the good and the bad, right? And just what kind of picture does that look like? My assumption here is that that is the next phase of planning here. But I wanted to just affirm that, check that, and ask just when we can anticipate that level of detail coming forward to the board. Commissioner Gupta?
Echo the gratitude and the comments that were shared. I'll keep this brief. 25%, 16%, that is, that is deep, that is painful. Much is asked from sites, and we see Central giving that much as well. Out of curiosity, based on a comment that Commissioner Alexander had made earlier, which department is enrollment under? Is it operations? Okay. Just general question about what's being cut in enrollment as well, but I'll save that. I also appreciate the look at the other school districts so that we have a benchmark. In the next phase of planning, I guess this is a question for my, is, will we see the, I understand and really appreciate the work on this slide. Will we see the effect on the year? Oh, gosh, I'm going to get the year wrong, but basically going, once we enter June, we're obviously into a new year. So it would be, it would be great to understand what that looks like then, three years out, as we move towards hopefully a positive certification.
Commissioner Fisher?
I echo everyone's thanks and the transparency. This is, I also echo what we're hearing from our school sites and our folks who have received layoff notices and that this is painful and not easy. So thank you, Ms. Lausmith, for acknowledging that, too. I think a lot of my questions are really about how we're making these cuts with respect to our goals, our guardrails, and our equity work. And so I appreciate that in the org charts, you did name that Superintendent Sue. But I do have questions about how that cascades and the very, very, very important work that some of these positions and the people that are in them are doing, as we heard throughout public comment and we continue to hear. You mentioned in Superintendent Sue, you've mentioned in a couple of the budget town halls that we lose 20 to $30 million due to under attendance. But it's our C walls, and it's our family liaisons, and it's those folks who actually increase attendance. And so I'm seeing some tensions, like we need
And, and so I'm seeing some tensions, like we need to implement MTSS and yet we're cutting our R T Fs. And of course, we need folks back in the classroom, right? So I respect that prioritization. But, you know, we've, we're being sanctioned for over suspending our black youth and for over identifying our, our black youth to special education. And yet, all these support staff that would get us out of these sanctions that cost us money, we're cutting. And so I, as many folks have said in public comment, who's going to continue to do this work? Who's going to pick it up and really help us meet our equity goals and live? I mean, for many, many years in this district, equity has been a pretty word. And we haven't had the action that goes along with it. And so I also struggle with seeing that here in this plan. The slide eight, though, and starting to reduce our reliance on non-public agencies. I think that is a huge bright spot. And so with all of this, I think the devil's going to be in the details. So seeing the more detailed plan about what this looks like, who's picking up the work that is being done by these positions and, and how we can meet our compliance mandates and, and the work we have to do is still my overarching question. And so we look forward to seeing that in future presentations.
Yeah, so maybe I can take a couple. And Meli, I know that she was looking for some numbers as well. I will say that the next iteration for, for this work is for us to draft up new job descriptions for staff to apply for. So after this, we're going to go back for many of the new positions that we're proposing because a lot of these positions are going to be merged positions because, once again, we're making these reductions. So we are going to work with that consultant, work with our HR team, work with the existing leadership team to draft the job description. And then we're going to try our best to turn around and post those positions so that we can have a seamless transition starting July 1st. There is a process that we're going through to really think about what are the strategic abandonment of our initiatives that we need to start engaging in. Because as you can imagine, with reduction in staff, there's no way for us to continue to provide the same, all the different services, all the different programs. I know that I was in front of this board, I think in December, saying that I have asked our staff to make proposals to me for reductions of between 20% to 40% and in some cases, complete elimination. And I am very grateful for the, the staff, that they did do that. They went back, they dug deep, had deep conversations with their own team and, and figured out which, which initiatives we need to stop, which of course meant which teams we no longer could continue to support. So those are very difficult, painful conversations that has, has started. And now we are going to move into the implementation of that. And, you know, I think I said to President Kim, I've, you know, I'm very, I, I love this work. I love doing this work. This is the part of the work that hurts my heart and hurts my soul the most. Because I, you know, I, I'm looking at people that I've spent the past six months with and for some people, I've spent the past 20 years working with. And we're, we're, you know, we're at the crux of saying goodbye to some of these people. It's really, really hard. And I hope that, I know this board will give us the grace, but I also hope that our community would give us the grace to also be able to embrace our staff and, and hold our staff and thank our staff for all the work that they've done. I, I agree that there are, there are perhaps deeper cuts that we can make in our contracts. I think there's going to be some very painful decisions that we have to weigh, the pros and cons for, for certain things that we currently have in our contracts. And, and yes, $3.8 million maybe is not enough and we're going to have to figure out how to cut deeper. We'll have to also wait until we do a final analysis of the schools' budgets that our principals just finished entering into the system. I know that the budget team is looking at the budget now and trying to tally up what are the actual costs that, that is going to go into our schools? What are the true student experience will be in schools? Because every school, we've allocated site discretionary dollars to and those, the school community had the opportunity over the last several months to figure out what positions they were going to hire and, and bring back so that they can serve their student community better. So once we go through each school's budget to determine what are the staffing levels inside those schools, then we'll have a better picture of how much money the school community is allocating towards schools. And then we'll continue to have a clearer picture of how much money we're talking about at the end of the day. So that goes to your budget projection. We are going to be able to do that, but we probably won't be able to do that until another, another month or so. I think those are all the major questions. Meli, do you want to add anything?
Sure, I can add a little bit. Commissioner Ray, to your question about how does the, the SERP cost in the 33.9 million interact? We haven't done the deep, deep dive of that and we're kind of looking at it because there, we're looking at about a $5 million, $5 million cost to the district overall for, for the buyouts. And so we're going to look at it when we come, and this is kind of answering your question, Commissioner Gupta, about the multi-year projections and the third interim report that is coming. So with that, we're going to update our fiscal stabilization plan and we'll be tagging in that plan where that $5 million comes and how it impacts our stabilization. Need to do a little bit of a deeper dive on the 30, on the, the savings of folks that we, of positions where someone took the SERP and that position was eliminated versus someone took the SERP and that position was filled and potentially with a lower salary. So a lot of things sort of have to come into play, but that's something we just keep continuing to look on. Anne Marie and I are beginning to work with our CDE advisors to start talking about the multi-year projection and the third interim. What we really want to bring in the third interim is sort of the multi-year projections for the next three years, for '25, '26, '26, '27 and '27, '28. Because it doesn't really help to look at this year that it's ending. I mean, it's helpful for the proposed, the adopted budget that we need in, at the, at the end of June, but we want to start looking at the next three years. It's very important. So that's where we're taking that discussion. I will say that the third interim will give you more detail, but there will still be questions because it takes a while to build a budget. And we've got the first reading of the proposed budget on June 7th and then the second on the last meeting in June. So we'll just keep bringing information to you as we build it and as we shift to the new system. So we're actually having to pull reports from two different places now, like, and it's all going to be fine because change has changed, but we're working on that. So we'll have a lot more detail. I, I agree with Dr. Su, Vice President Huling. I think there's more to be made in contracts. We might come back with like, this year is what we would recommend for transportation and next year, maybe cut another X percent. So sort of some type of cascading in terms of the general ed, transportation costs, contract costs, what we can do with the agency costs as we hire new staff and things like that. So we're starting to think strategically around that. Oh, and sorry, one more. Commissioner Alexander, on the BLA report, I appreciate those and we are going to look at those as much as possible. I think it also would be interesting, once we've adopted the budget, to do like a deeper dive and a more analysis to sort of inform the next year as we're moving into it. I mean, my recommendation would be to literally start planning your next year's budget as soon as you pass this year's budget. I have a lot of thoughts about that. But I do want to say, I also looked at the BLA report real quickly and what also really stood out for me is not only was it 25% and I think the year was 2020, '21 was the benchmark, I guess we can call that, but there were 1,294 central office positions. And after this reductions, you'll be down to 875. So that's, again, I want to say that's people and that's, that, I don't want to make light of it. And also, that's 419 fewer positions. And if I looked a little bit more deeply at it, there was a good amount of money that was reinvested into school sites. So eliminating those positions did not just go to reducing the deficit, but it was able to reinvest into, into school sites. So that work that started in 2021, '22, it is definitely moved the needle so far in those percentages and we'll keep looking at it.
Thank you, Meli. I know it's reaching dark hour, dark hour. Gosh, late, it's late. I'll just share a very quick conversation that we had with our leadership team meeting on Monday where, you know, I, I just, I bluntly said, there is no other option but for us to meet our $114 million structural deficit goal this year. Not only was it something that, something that was passed in our fiscal stabilization plan and not only is it a superintendent metric, but we cannot go through all of this pain and not experience a better version of our district a year from now. And so that option, I mean, it's not, it's not an option. We, we have to do this right and we have to do this honoring the folks who committed their time service and, and blood, sweat and tears to this organization and this institution. And so I'll just end by saying thank you for, again, the hard work here. And we know this is not the last conversation that we'll have as a board. So, cool. Thank you, Meli. Moving on to our last item is item F3, Board Leadership Response to Board Metrics. I'll invite my colleagues to join me on our memo that was sent out to the board on Friday. And again, thank you for the grace of not meeting our own expectations of a 10, oh, sorry, 12-day draft. What I'm going to do during this time, and I'm going to try to limit this to maybe as short as possible. I'm going to say 10 minutes, sooner would be great. And just add some context to this. One, we are not making action on this. This is just a discussion for us to get a directional alignment on where we're going and making sure that the board feels informed on the direction that we're headed. This obviously requires some partnership with the superintendent and staff to make sure that we are able to operationalize all of this and, and it will depend heavily on the capacity of central office and, and her team to be able to support us in this work. But what I'll just do is quickly voice over what we have planned here. And again, I open it up for conversation and knowing that we will have opportunities to, to operationalize this after today's meeting. Essentially, what we're looking at are, are a combination of, of leadership teamwork that will continue in partnership with the superintendent and shared board work in the form of ad-hocs over the next eight to 10 months. There are three ad-hocs that are being proposed here. One around public engagement, another around progress monitoring and another around policy. And what, what I tried to do was articulate just kind of what were the, some of the parameters around some of those ad-hocs. And what you see in the last page here is kind of a proposed structure around what that ad hoc might look like. And so very quickly, the first ad hoc on public engagement is meant to ask ourselves, what is the expectation, the baseline expectation that we are going to ask all commissioners to be engaged with in any given year between the board as a whole and the broader public? The reason I'm defining the broader public in that way is because anything else regarding schools, staff, principal engagement, site visits, et cetera, requires staff time, which falls under the superintendent. And so those will be conversations that leadership will have with the superintendent around what's feasible and what's sustainable. But the conversations around how the board can engage with the public is a question and conversation we should have with the public. The second around progress monitoring, this body of work is intended to set expectations around what robust progress monitoring looks like so that the staff can have clarity on what they should be presenting to us and what those expectations may look like. And the hope is to time this such that we provide these expectations well before the next school year so that when the new interim goals and guardrails are presented, that staff have clarity on how to best monitor, present whatever materials to monitor that work. And the last around the ad hoc committee on policy is in part out of the direction of the Council of Great City Schools and the work around good governance efforts. But frankly, the board has just never had an opportunity to reassess and take stock of the policies and resolutions that we have. We just keep adding, adding, adding. And so this is an opportunity for us not to change any content of those policies yet, but to just have a conversation around, does this fall under the board purview? Does this fall under superintendent purview? And are there other resolutions of board policies that are significant, that rise to the level of supporting RVVGGs that we also just want to retain? And so again, it's, it's a, I don't want to underestimate the amount of work it takes to do this, but it is meant to be an exercise of identifying what aligns actually to our new governance model and bringing those options to the board. Each of these should be, you know, again, thoughtfully planned out and we need to create both work plans and a timeline for all of this as well. But the general hope is that we will start with an ad hoc committee on public engagement, moving quickly into an ad hoc committee on progress monitoring. Again, the hope there being that we can start the new year with some of those expectations and that we will end this year with an ad hoc on policy. Everything else that you see that doesn't actually mention an ad hoc is work that we intend to do either between Vice President Huling and myself with the superintendent or we may pull in other commissioners to support. But knowing that, again, all of this requires some thoughtful planning ahead of us. With that said, I will stop here and the, and really the question right now is, does this directionally feel right? Is there anything that feels disconnected or not aligned in the work that we have intended? And if so, it's a good opportunity to share that. Otherwise, we'll take your silence as an endorsement. And Vice President Huling and Superintendent Su, if there's anything that you both want to add to this, please, please do. Commissioner Fisher?
I just want to thank you very much for the work that's gone into this. I'm really grateful. Before I was on the board and was working with a couple of the commissioners at the time around a potential resolution for reading curriculum, I remember meeting with our chief academics officer at the time, Dr. Priestley. And she wasn't opposed in theory to what we were trying to do, but what she said just practically to me, she said, "I have 18 resolutions from the board that I have to present on every year. The data that we have to collect, the time that my staff has to work on those presentations, just like, it pulls us away from all of our other work." So she said, "Think about that before you go through with writing this resolution." And that was really transformative for the way that I thought about some of these well-intended, but also unfunded policies that we, we have in place, right? And some of them do, I mean, our mandate is governance, not operations. And some of them do absolutely veer into micromanagement. And, and to your point, President Kim, I think they also, some of them are values-related. And so there's some policies that I think, especially now with our current federal administration, it's really critically important for us to just maintain, to show our students and our staff and our community how much we value them. So that's down the line first and foremost. I'm super excited about the community engagement and I don't want to talk behind their backs because our student delegates are not here, but I would strongly encourage us in the community engagement piece to include them as well. Because I know that has been a huge, huge priority of theirs is to figure out what student engagement looks like as well.
And taking AJ's coaching about ad hoc committees, you know, we're expecting that basically each ad hoc committee is, that's going to be constituted, is going to have essentially like a deliverable document at the end. And so I think to your point about all of the resolutions, like, one thing we may want to look at is like, what policies do we have in place that they're on paper, but they're, they're actually no longer the direction that we're going and that we need to actually own up to that and say, this is actually, you know, we need to take board action to undo some of those resolutions? And also with the community engagement piece, we're hoping that there will be essentially a calendar and a commitment proposed from all of our commissioners as to like a as to like a regular schedule um, and process for community engagement. For example, like town halls with a non-quorum where we can hear from folks and not have people put in a position where they're coming to public comment to feel like they've been heard. And also a regular schedule for visiting schools so that, again, schools, you know, have regular engagement with the board and aren't feeling like they're having to, you know, throw up a distress flag when they need attention. And one of the things that I think would be helpful for us, since we can only discuss these things in um, person, in open session as a group, is to kind of hear what folks are interested in potentially serving on. And if, we're hoping that we will be able to get some, you know, have the capacity to potentially at least double track two of these or have overlapping um, time periods so that they're on a rolling basis, but everyone essentially serves on one um, ad hoc policy committee. And then we're going to draw straws to see which one of us ends up on two.
I'm just gonna.
Hopefully those two won't go concurrently. But if, you know, if folks have thoughts about that, um, so that we can get the work underway quickly. And I guess one, one question I have is, are people pro or con working over the summer? For me, I'm like, oh, it's when we don't have board meetings.
Not a decision to make at 11 o'clock on Tuesday, we'll say. Yeah, go for it.
I also want to really thank um, President Kim and Vice President Huling and Superintendent Sue for this work. I think it's really great and really helpful. And I'll just maybe highlight the ad hoc committee that you haven't talked about and which is actually the one I'm most interested in, just to answer your question, which is progress monitoring. Because I think that's like a, a really high leverage area where, you know, I think, I love the concept, but I think we've struggled frankly over the last couple of years as we've tried to do it to get the culture right, where, you know, it started feeling a little bit too like, too much like a gotcha thing. So then we stopped voting and, you know, it's like, how do we ask questions in a way that actually creates the type of um, discussion that we really want? Uh, and I think that if we can figure that out as a governance team of how do we really set the tone that we want as the board to, to be able to talk with staff around student outcomes, that's going to help establish the culture uh, of the whole district, right? And how, how student outcomes get talked about um, at other levels of the district. So I think that's a really interesting one. I don't, I, I think it um, it's going to require some, some work and some maybe looking at other districts that have done it effectively and so forth. But I think that's, that's a, a high leverage uh, area where we could really show our leadership as a board. So thank you for all this work you've done.
Any other comments or questions? Awesome. Thanks.
We're working diligently on the governance calendar.
Yes. And I just, I'll end by acknowledging, this is meant to be complimentary to a lot of the, the metrics of the superintendent. As we know, uh, one of the metrics is for example, to bring some good governance training and student outcomes focused governance training to staff um, in the district. And so, and we have one as well to bring it to the public. So that, there's hopefully some complimentary work here. Um, that's pretty clear. Excellent. Thank you so much. I'm going to move to item I, Consent Calendar. Are there any items withdrawn or corrected by the superintendent?
There are none. I move to remove the uh, the MOU.
Oh, yeah. Sorry, for me, yes.
Yes.
I will need to.
So I, what is, what's this?
From item 14, under MOU consent items.
I move to sever item I 14 from the consent calendar. Second.
Mr. Steele, can we get a roll call vote on the remaining um, consent calendar items? And then we'll have the folks vote on.
We can vote on the severing first?
Yes.
That work?
Whatever you want.
Okay, I'm severing I 14. Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Gupta?
Yes.
Vice President Huling?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray? Commissioner Wyman Ward, President Kim?
Yes.
Six eyes severed.
Great. Can you tell me what you'd like for me to do next?
Believe we can take a vote, we can take a vote on the rest of the consent.
Great, great. I'm, I'm going to motion to vote on the consent.
Second.
Roll call vote, Mr. Steele?
Thank you. I'm sorry, Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Gupta?
Yes.
Vice President Huling?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray?
Yes.
Commissioner Wyman Ward, President Kim?
Yes.
Success, thank you. Now we need to vote on I, I 14. Wait, he's not, he's just getting voted, right? I'm sorry, I don't know.
President Kim has excused himself to avoid the appearance of a potential conflict. So in his absence, I'm resting the mic from him. Uh, and I move uh, to approve item I 14. You're not allowed to make deliberations, sir.
Thank, roll call vote? Yeah, we, we had a second.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Great. Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Gupta?
Yes.
Vice President Huling?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray?
Yes.
Commissioner Wyman Ward, and that's it. Uh, five eyes, thank you. One, two.
I adjourn, adjourn today's meeting at 11:09 PM.
And I would actually also like to officially thank our CSBA region delegate, President Pat Murray, who was here earlier, as well as fellow delegate from San Mateo Union who were here.